You're watching Titusville City TV.
Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
... to the flag, United States of America, your republic, one nation, for God, indivisible, and the people of this world.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speaker shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited for speaking for a total of 10 minutes, regardless of the number of items identified.
Stay tuned for the Titusville City Council Meeting.
And finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits must be submitted to the -- are being submitted to the city council, shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber. And Mayor Diesel, I just need to note that I've been given three cards with no agenda item number on it, so I don't know what those persons want. I'd like to put them back in the box and mention last names of Atal, Myriam, and Badisha. You would like to get your card back and put the number on it.
If you guys want to -- okay, we'll deal with that when we get there then. Thank you. Thank you, Clerk. Let me wait a minute, because we don't want her to miss anything. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 23, 2021, 6:30 meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes for the number of November 23, 6:30 meeting.
Motion from Vice Mayor, second by Member Nelson. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Stokoe?
Passage unanimously. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We have a couple housekeeping items we'd like to do before we get rolling into the agenda. First, I'd like -- staff is recommending that we table item 9C to your 8 February 22, 6:30 meeting.
Do I have a motion to table that?
Yes.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second by Member Nelson. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Carries?
Next item is we'd like to move item 9A to now.
And do I have a motion?
Move the table, 9A.
No, no, we're moving 9A to this moment.
I'm sorry, moved. You got me off guard when you said "now," so I moved that -- we moved 9A to...
Top of the agenda.
Now, top of the agenda, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor?
Second.
Second by Member Nelson. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Carries? City Manager?
Yes, sir, this is ordinance number 1, 2022, relating to indoor recreation in industrial zoning districts. City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 1, 2022, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations to include gymnasiums in the definition of recreation and commercial amusement indoor. To correct the scrivener's error and to allow indoor recreation as a limited use in light industrial services and warehousing M1 in planned industrial development PID zoning districts by amending Sections 28-54 Use Table and 28-275 Recreation and Commercial Amusement Indoor and amending Section 37-1 Definitions, Providing Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Effective Date, and Incorporation into the Code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their 5 January 2022 meeting and recommended approval as presented. On November 9, 2021, in response to requests from members of the public, City Council approved advisability for staff to prepare an ordinance to allow indoor recreation and industrial zoning as a limited use. Draft ordinance contains the following changes to the code. It corrects the words "areas" to "arenas," adds gymnasiums to the definition of recreation and commercial amusement indoor, provides standards for indoor recreation uses within light industrial services and warehousing M1 in planned industrial development PID zoning districts.
Semi annual report, I believe we have Ms. Shifflow here to present.
Ms. Shifflow. With enthusiasm. This your name and address and take off.
Tony Shifflow, 715 Tropic Street, the historic Norwood House, alternate on the Historic Preservation Board. So I wanted to say, good evening. I am pleased to stand before you as a representative member of your Historic Preservation Board to give our semi annual report, July through December 2021. I was supposed to appear before you in July for the report on the first half of the year. However, I was in parish hospital for a medical emergency where I was treated royally, I would like to add, so much so that I didn't want to leave when I was discharged.
He's kidding.
I did go home, though, and here I am. To that end, we were, um, we, the Historic Preservation Board, are a quiet, but significant group in shaping the tone of Titusville by highlighting our significant past personages, places, and events. To that end, we were busy in the last half of 2021. We created an informational rack card and bookmark with a link to the City of Titusville Historic Resource website as a companion piece to our booklet. Our booklet, and it has four different website based tours that you can get the link card. And it's a companion to our brochure, The Titusville Historic Landmarks. By working closely with the design team, I finagled the historic Norwood House onto a tour along with the Carter House, now a successful Boys and Girls Club in our neighborhood. We opted to hold off on recommending, amending, the city's Historic Preservation Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Code with regards to permitting applications for exemption after construction on a rehab has started, mainly because this is a non-issue now, is we only have one historic structure being reconstructed, and that's the Mudder, the Mudder Building on Washington Street. Our annual Historic Preservation Board Workshop was held on October 19th, 2021 at the North Brevard Senior Center, and despite COVID, was well attended by many appropriate people, and photographs of this workshop are in your agenda package. An update on the Carter House renovation into a Boys and Girls Club was presented, and we had a guest speaker, Ms. Vicki Oldham from the Newtown Alive Historic Preservation Project in the City of Sarasota, who spoke about their initiative tracing the history of Newtown, a historic African-American neighborhood in one of Sarasota's oldest communities. Ms. Oldham informed the audience of the Newtown Alive Project, which included a research report, a book, historic markers, a documentary, a guided trolley tour, a traveling exhibition, walking tours, oral history interviews, an inventory of historic structures, and a podcast series, all found on Newtownalive.org, a mobile app. The project has received local and state awards, and Ms. Oldham spoke of how the Newtown Initiative could be carried over to other historic African-American neighborhoods in the state, especially Titusville. So the Newtown Alive Project led us to join the National Trust for Historic Preservation in order to apply for National Trust grants, which we immediately did. So the board directed staff, great working staff, to research underrepresented community grants for historic preservation. And we applied for a $50,000 National Trust grant, and it's entitled, "Telling the Full History Preservation Grant," authorization for which came before this council at your November meeting. If awarded March 1st, the grant will fund the research of Titusville's African-American neighborhoods, history, and landmarks to provide a report, signs and markers, oral histories, and mapping of sites and landmarks with appropriate interpretive signage. We're really hoping that this grant comes through. This information can then be added to the Explore Historic Titusville web information and the mobile app and the booklet. We're focusing on the area just west of the railroad tracks known as West Titusville, a neighborhood we've been discussing with residents and community services about designating as a neighborhood conservation district, which would address infill requirements on the numerous empty lots in the area, as well as cohesive signage, streetlights, litter control, tree protection and plantings, et cetera, to unify the area and to highlight its significance as a, as the center of the African-American business and residential areas in Titusville historically. We decided to move our annual workshop from October to the month of May in order to coincide with National Historic Preservation Month. And our work plan is to continue work on strategies to encourage property owners of historic buildings to participate in listing their buildings in the city's local historic register, and to encourage the preservation of historic and potentially historic buildings in the city by adaptive reuse, such as the Carter House, as championed by Councilwoman and former Vice Mayor Jo Lynn Nelson. And it's so highly successful and beautiful.
Absolutely.
That many, many, many buildings in this town could be done likewise and utilized for wonderful purposes, like a Boys and Girls Club. So we really are working toward that on, on the Historic Preservation Board. And we've scheduled guest speakers to our monthly meetings, and Dr. George Faison is scheduled to speak on the history of Oak Ridge Cemetery at our February 7th meeting here in Council Chambers at 1:00 PM, and you are all invited to attend. The Historic Preservation Board, quiet but quite active.
Very good. One, one thing, Ms. Tony.
Yes.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for your passion.
I love it.
I've never known you not to have passion, so I appreciate that. Could you introduce your mom for me, please?
I would. I would love to intro. I would love to introduce to you my mother, who just celebrated her 98th.
98th birthday.
Gracie Buckwald, Gracie Buckwald from Orlando.
Thank you very. Happy birthday to you, and we, we all expect to be at the 100th birthday party. And it's only two. Thank you so much, very much. Uh, City Manager.
Onto item 6C, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission Semi Annual Report, as included in your packet as written.
Perfect.
Consent agenda item 6D is the Planning and Zoning Commission. The terms of regular members Linwood, Woody Rice, dual-member PNZ and TEC, Jesse Porter, Jane Spidel, and Romney Grant expire on 31 January 22. The term of alternate member Aaron Faison also expires on 31 January 22. Regular members Rice, dual-member PNZ and TNC, Spidel, and Grant have expressed their willingness and desire to serve on their board as regular members for another two-year term to expire on 31 January 2024. Regular member Porter does not wish to seek reappointment as a regular member at this time. Alternate member Faison does not wish to seek reappointment at this time either. Mr. Christopher Childs currently serves as an alternate with a term to expire on January 31st, 2023. Staff contacted Mr. Childs. He expressed his willingness and desire to serve as a regular member with the term to expire on 31 January 2024. If not appointed as a regular member, Mr. Childs wishes to continue as an alternate member in that current position. There are currently two applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Robert Johnston, Mr. Thomas Perez have expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this board as regular or alternate members. Currently, Mr. Perez serves on the TEC as a regular member. If appointed to a dual-member position of PNZ and TNC, TEC, he can serve on both boards. If appointed to another position, he will no longer be able to serve on the TEC board. And I think we have all of the appointees are present in the room.
Okay, and with a couple of questions to try to sort this out. How many are, that are being reappointed, have accepted, want to be reappointed?
Members Rice, Spidel, and Grant as regular members do wish to be reappointed.
And I will just go, we'll start there. If any of you three would like to speak and just say, hey, this is great, we're doing super, or if you just want to wave, I'm here and I want to be reappointed, I'll take that too. So Ms. Spidel. Who taught down the hallway from you for several years with some very difficult children, and she handled them very well. So I'm sure she handled the PNZ greatly.
I'm still teaching, I'm still teaching down the hall from somebody, someplace.
For about 50 years.
No, 48, I think. I did the subtraction, 48, yes.
All right, so give us.
I retired 12 years ago, but it didn't work very well. I'd like to thank the entire board for my acceptance a couple of years ago, and I'm now chair, so I'd like to thank all of the people that work with me, that have formed an extremely effective commission. I first asked to be on the board because I've been a resident of Titusville for 40 years. I taught in Seminole County for 10 years, and I was there for 14 hours a day, so I was not able to do anything to contribute to the city. So I applied for this position and really appreciated it, and appreciate the depth of knowledge that you have and the ignorance that I had when I started. So it is a, it is a grueling way to learn about the city, and I think right now it's especially important. I am a public employee as a public school teacher, and so, and I've been that for most of my life. Right now, Titusville is facing the most development and the most serious conditions of the environment, especially the Indian River Lagoon. And it is not only a privilege to serve on this committee and to get as much knowledge as I can, but I also feel that I'm in a very good position not to have any conflicts at all, because I'm in public service, but I have a breadth of knowledge about, and I'm always learning something about the city and its development and its environment. Right now, I'm chair, as I said, which has just been a privilege. I'd like to continue serving on the committee with the pleasure of each of you. I'd also like to say something about another member who had a family emergency. Romy Grant has served very well on this committee. What a gentleman, what a knowledgeable person. And we've talked privately, just as, you know, he told me I cannot be, cannot attend this meeting. I hope that people will say something about me, so I'm asking you to consider Mr. Grant also. You know my biography. I've passed a master's degree. I work for Brevard Public Schools. I have leadership experience at the district. I'm recognized as a full-braided teacher internationally, and I was teacher, runner-up for Teacher of the Year several years ago for the whole district. So I'm open for any questions or any comments.
I see none. I've known you a long time, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate you taking on, not only being on the PNZ, but becoming the chair, which is a different game. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. There we go. Next up.
Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue, and I appreciate your past support, and I appreciate the support going forward. But tonight, what I really want to share with you is that every member, including myself, we serve at the pleasure of City Council when we serve on these boards, and we do it for the love of our community. And, you know, part of what you guys do is very difficult, and these board appointments are very important. And anytime you appoint someone, you want someone that will carry out your all's vision of what you want in our city and, and the ideology that represents you. And I just want to say that anytime that if I'm not representing you all to the best of my ability and within your vision, don't reappoint me. Reappoint someone that you want in there. I get it. It's business, okay? At any time, if I am reappointed during my term, if I'm not following out of your vision of what you're trying to accomplish in the city, just come to me, and, and I'll vacate the seat willingly. It's, it's nothing personal, it's just business. It's about our community and the love of our community. Thank you.
Any questions? Member Nelson.
Woody, I do have a question, because you know, I think you're brilliant. And. Okay. You're smart. Let's just say that. God knows you know everything about our codes and everything else. The concern I had was that you're busy. And so to me, it was sort of like, he's busy, he's doing work, and you're doing some really good projects, and then you're over here trying to do this too. And I was sort of like, maybe, maybe even like rotate that liaison position where you can go out, you can do your work. I mean, I don't blame people for hiring you. Can't blame them. But let you do that and then back. That was sort of my thought.
I've, I've been involved in my community a long time.
Yeah.
Served at 32 years old on City Council. And you do it not because it's hard, not because it's easy, not because it takes too much time, it's because you do it for the love of your community.
Yeah.
Because you want your, your community to be better tomorrow than it was today. So, you know, I'm willing to serve.
Yeah.
I, I serve at your all's pleasure.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Woody.
Thank you, Woody. Next up, who's here, who's on? Is that it? That would have been, Roni? Okay, well, we've got Mr. Childs out there too, but right now, what I'm looking at are the three who are on the board who wish to be reappointed. Roni wishes to be reappointed. I'd like to get that part out of the way first, if I can get that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Mr. Woody Rice, Ms. Jane Spidel, and Mr. Romy Grant to a term that will end January 31st, 2024.
Since you read all that, and I know we're gonna have to do something else, but let me get my second. I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe, and do I need to?
I have a question, Ms. Mayor. I, I don't know. If, if you do it that way, it already seals up all three of those slots.
Still one more. Still one more.
What I'm sealing up is if those three returners wish to return, and I'd like them to return, then I can have them return now. If I have questions about that, this would be the time to raise that.
I, I have an alternate proposition, and, and in part is because Woody is doing a couple of big projects in, in the community, and I think it would be easier if we rotated it and we. Jane, Romy, Chris, and Tom Perez as the liaison. And then, a couple of years from now, I'm hoping Woody will come back and help us out again. But that sort of frees him up, I mean.
But you're freeing him up, and I didn't hear him ask for that.
Oh, he did not ask for that, but he is.
All right, so I, I just want to make that clear, because it was almost like we're trying to do him a favor. We gotta free him up, but I didn't hear that. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, you say what I was going to say. The question was asked, he's willing to serve. We all are busy. I know that I am for sure. And he's, he said that he wants to serve. There is already a motion, and what we're trying to do is make this clean. And I understand Member Robinson's concern. We actually have four open seats, but we have three individuals who are already serving. So what the mayor is asking for us to clear that up, for those three who are willing to serve, continue to serve, and that's what my motion is.
Uh, City Attorney, is there a, a different way I'm supposed to do this?
You can do the motion. The only thing you need to consider is there may be applicants that want to vie for the, one of those seats that would want to be heard before you make your motion.
Okay. Yeah, I got you, Member Robinson.
Yeah, the other point is, I know we've had a discussion about the designated liaison. I'm not sure where that is in the code. The code does say at least one member of the commission may also be a member of PNZ. We don't talk about a designated liaison that I'm aware of. It just, we've never had more than one. I can just tell you, the code says at least one member of TEC may also be a member of PNZ.
So technically, we could have two.
I don't see any prohibition on that. Um, I just know we've never had. I just wanted to point out what the code actually says.
Okay, thank you.
Well, seeing no prohibition, something you could have three if I wanted.
It says at least one.
So we could have all four.
It does get, you create issues when you do that, I'll be honest with you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, we're trying to muddy the waters, and it doesn't need to be, um, muddy. To, back to Councilman Robinson's concern, there still is one open seat left. So I think that was resolved, what you're thinking about as far as having whomever has an application in, to have an opportunity to be a permanent member there. But I, I'm pretty clear that we've got three who want to remain on, on the council. I need the motion, and I'm gonna call the question.
Well, with discussion, hold on one second, because I want to make it clear to everybody out there, you can take the names out. If we have three people who are serving, you know, if we perceive have done a good job, and I've heard nothing otherwise, um, and, and my feeling is that we want to reappoint those, and then let's look and see what's open, especially for, you know, the new people who haven't been on the board yet. If I'm wrong on that, I'm, I'm good to go another direction. Stan, I don't think I can call on you. I, I really don't. I don't think I can just call on people out there. If it was a classroom, I'd have you covered, but hold on. More guidance on where we're at here.
Correct. I, I think you have cards, like I said, as I stated previously, certainly if this council, it's your purview to appoint who you're gonna appoint. The only thing to consider is, and, and you've made it clear that, you know, there's three current ones that you would, you would reappoint. Might want to get all the cards just out of the way now and then get into your motions, because there may be someone with a card that wants to speak and convince you that they should be serving in that full-time role.
And as this was discussed, I was thinking that's where I might go, and I could probably have.
I would go ahead and call the cards, and then once you get the cards done and everyone sent their piece, then you can take the motions as you say.
I, I'm fine with that. That's a good idea. And Member Robinson, I think you were kind of trying to say that. See, I was just giving you credit so you didn't go home and say, I've said that. No, I, that's exactly what you're saying.
That's drugs, buddy, drugs.
All right, so with that, City Clerk, call the cards.
Uh, yes, sir. Three cards. First, Tony Shifflow.
Tony Shifflow, 715 Tropic Street. I'd like to just point out that what Member Nelson and Robinson were getting at is that someone may want to be the liaison from TEC. Now, Mr. Rice has already been appointed at your November meeting to the TEC with the term to expire November 30th, 2024. And if he's not the liaison, then I don't see how he can be, remain on the P and C, the Planning and Zoning, because he was appointed to be the liaison from the TEC, and that's a position that in November, you voted him to be a member of. At the November 2021 City Council meeting, Woody Rice was reappointed to serve on the TEC for a term to expire November 30, 2024. He also serves on PNZ and is up for reappointment to that advisory board. Since he is an engineer who advises, consults, and works with developers who are applying, are applying for permits and variances, there exists, if not actual, the perception of a conflict of interest on his discussion and his votes, as exhibited in one of the recent meetings where he sort of took over and said it was a project he was working on. Therefore, I urge council to not reappoint Mr. Rice to the PNZ, but instead appoint Tom Perez to this important liaison position. Mr. Perez has diligently served on TEC, never missing a meeting, and always prepared for it, and has on numerous occasions attended PNZ meetings to follow matters concerning the Indian River Lagoon, the city's trees and landscape regulations, and other agenda items concerning the local environment and, and petitioned by the citizens of Titusville. He's an excellent candidate to fill this special position, liaison for TEC and PNZ, with no shadow of any conflicts, but a knowledge base and dedication to the ecologically safe way to economic growth and prosperity in Titusville and our surrounding environs. So instead of appointing Mr. Rice to the liaison position, appoint Tom Perez, this important dual role, as TEC liaison to planning and zoning. And I'm thankful that you decided to let people speak before you voted on something that would be wrong.
Which we didn't do. But I would also say, in your words, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but the TEC part, the liaison, and she just read that, was voted on until November 2024. Somebody help me here, don't look at me like that.
Excuse me, Mayor. He was voted to be, to be on the Titusville Environmental Commission, not necessarily as the liaison to PNZ. That was not part of the vote, as I read in the minutes. Now, it could have been part of the discussion, but it was not recorded in the minutes of that meeting.
All right.
I read them.
You always do. Yes, you do. I appreciate it. Who would be up next?
Uh, sir, Stan Johnston, also, he's one of your applicants.
Thank you. Now raise your hand.
Thank you, Tony. That's what I was raising my hand about, because speaking cards. Would you hand out that, uh, business card? Just, just one of them, just, I know, just, just let them pass it. They don't, they don't have to have, just, they can just peek it.
Don't lose your time.
Okay. Okay, so, so this is my business card that I haven't been handing out, and, and, uh, we've got some wonderful people who are, are in competition for this, and, and as you know, is that I've got some, some credentials, a professional engineer, and, and I have, that's been since 1976, and I have a PLS license, license in 1980, and that was, it's in inactive capacity right now. And, uh, I've got some, uh, I've, I've sent to you some information about problems in the city, and for example, the comprehensive plan and so forth is, is out of date for, for many reasons, and I haven't received any comments saying that I'm wrong. Although I've seen, I've received comments about some other things that I'm, I'm wrong about, but there's nothing. For example, in this erroneous flood zones, nobody opposes that. Haven't anybody opposed it, or maybe they oppose it, but they don't, don't send it to me, I haven't, and we have the flooding of, of property that is going to happen because we're not maintaining ditches. That's a PNZ issue. We have approximate wetland mapping used by, that is based on soil survey that's absolutely nonsense, and, and I've been told it's illegal. Nobody's been opposing that, and the area of critical concern is, is out of, out of, it's out of date. So those are some things that I would bring forward to the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission if I were chosen, but you know, I might be not very, what, what Mr. Rice says, pleasure of the council. Sometimes I'm not considered. That's not funny. That's not funny. So, so I would like you to consider that, and maybe I'm not the man or the person that you want for this position, but I'm here to serve, and I'm here to serve, and that's what I've been doing big time, a lot of time in my life. I'm serving the community. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stan. All right, next up.
Casey Orange. Casey Orange, Titusville. Please appoint Tom Perez to Planning and Zoning Commission to serve as dual member of PNZ and TEC. Tom has been on the Titusville Environmental Commission for several years and played an active role in the commission. Tom always comes to the TEC meeting well-prepared to discuss the many issues considered. Tom is engaged in many civic activities, Rotary Club, Meals and We. Tom is engaged in many civic activities, Rotary Club, Meals and Wheels, and Titusville Garden Club, Tree Farm. Tom would make an excellent planning and zoning commissioner. Please appoint Tom Perez to the Planning and Zoning Commission as dual member with T E C. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Next card.
Uh, yes, sir, last card, Thomas Perez.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm not a developer or associated in any way with the industry. I bring no obvious conflicts of interest, uh, to a post on the P C, P and Z. As a member of the T E C, I have worked with Mr. Rice. I like Mr. Rice. I respect Mr. Rice highly. He is charismatic and he is very knowledgeable. However, there are several things that are troubling. His background and the depth of his relationship with the city staff are troubling. As a member of P and Z, many of the topics on its agenda are issues that he inherently will have a vested interest in, therefore conflicted. The city gives much attention to sunshine laws and rightly so. Conflict of interest is equally serious. It has the potential of corrupting this institution and becoming normalized. As much as I esteem Mr. Rice's abilities, I feel that a more impartial member of P and Z, one who has no apparent conflict, would better serve the city's interest. Thank you.
Any questions, Vice Mayor?
I have a question.
Uh, Member Stokoe.
Yes, um, Mr. Perez, if we choose not to appoint you as the dual member, would you, and are interested in appointing you just to P and Z as that fourth member? Or the alternate perhaps, would you be willing to give up your appointment on T E C or would you want to stay on T E C instead?
I would be interested in staying on T E C. I was, uh, applying for the dual.
So only the dual is what you're interested in?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'm trying to understand this dual thing because it doesn't exist. I, I, I don't know where this is coming from. Um, this is not what we're doing tonight. It's about appointing members to the P and Z, period. This, this dual thing shouldn't have any relation to anything that we're doing tonight.
I will, I will say this to, to go with that, uh, as I looked, as I was getting my agenda ready and looking at the three or four that wanted to be back on, I didn't see anything on the agenda about dual. I didn't see anything about lining that up. All I saw was the P and Z. And that's what we were working on, the P and Z. And I know there obviously is some thought about, well, you know, uh, Member Rice is the dual. So if we get him out, move him on, we can move someone else in and certainly you'd be qualified to do both, as I think Mr. Rice is. But that wasn't on our agenda that I, you know, clarify, clarify me there. I could use some more support here. Member Stokoe, you hit your button again?
Yeah, so, okay, from my understanding with this dual and where it came about is we just wanted, as a council, we wanted to have representation on P and Z from a T E C member. I think T E C was getting concerned that their concerns were not being heard and they, they thought it would be wise to have a representative from their board as part of it. So since then, we have this dual member with the intent that that person goes to both meetings, um, and kind of represents. So from me looking at this, from what I'm gathering, we, yes, we will be appointing members to P and Z. Right now, Woody sits in that dual role. So the only, we do have the option to, if we wanted to appoint like Tom Perez and Woody to that board, we have the option to say, ask Woody to step down from T E C or whatnot and then have Tom Perez serve in that role. My personal take on this, and this has been my, since I've been on since two thousand sixteen, whenever I look at boards, um, I like well-rounded boards and I like people that serve well, that try to be the most balanced. And kind of to Member or Vice Mayor's point, I think all three of those that are up for reappointment have done an excellent job. Um, I know there were some current concerns mentioned about Woody. Um, my, my view is completely opposite. I, I like a balanced board and I feel like he brings another perspective to the board. If there is a conflict, I believe he would remove himself from that vote. So I would like to see him stay. I would like to see Jane stay. I would like to see Rami stay. Um, for the time being, that's kind of where I'm at.
Member Nelson.
In law, we have what is called the appearance of impropriety. And Woody has been good about saying, yeah, I have a conflict. But to the outside world, they, they don't know Woody. And do we have that appearance of impropriety even if we don't have it? And so to me, my thought is get away from that where there's no questions about, nobody questions Woody, nobody questions city, and we're totally aboard. So that's, that's my thought. And, uh, for the attorneys, you get in trouble for appearance of impropriety as well as proper acts. So my thought is Woody's working like crazy right now. Um, I understand he's got, well, he does have the project across from standpoint Park. And I think he's also working on Antigua Bay, not Antigua, Tranquility Bay. Um, and there's a number of projects there that I'm thinking are going to come before planning and zoning at different phases. And so therefore it would be easier to have somebody there who isn't going to have, who is going to be able to participate more. Um, I think Woody thought, well, he did, he told us you were planning on retiring. And I don't think that happened. I think it just got busier. And I think he understands that. So that's my thought. That's where I'm coming from.
Vice Mayor.
Let me try this one more time. There, there's Robert's Rules of Order and, and I have put a motion in. There's been a second point to hear from the public and I apologize for that. I think we should have heard from the public.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
And we've heard from the public, but my motion is still there and there's a second. I would like for us.
Vice Mayor, could I, I don't interrupt, but I, I know that Mr. Fason contacted my office earlier, said he would be here. I just went, didn't know if he wanted to speak. He's also up. I don't know if there's a card, but he advised.
No, he's, he's resigned.
Unless he wants.
He, he told us he might not. That's what I want to find out.
Oh.
Oh, come on up, sir. We need another surprise.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, everyone, yes. Um, so, um, as attorney has spoken, um, I did, I do want to maintain my position as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, initially I had said that I wanted to resign, uh, because I wanted to clear up my calendar because of going to school. Uh, I'm going to school full-time. However, that was just if I had a class on, on the nights of planning and zoning in the event of. Um, and of course I can schedule my classes whenever I want to, so I'll make sure I maintain having this evening, uh, uh, cleared up. So, um, so to you, I would like to maintain my, my seat on, as an alternate on the planning as well. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Member Stokoe.
Okay, do you want to stay as an alternate? Or if we do have an opening on the board, would you like to move into a position on the board?
I'd move into, I'd take the position as a permanent member.
Okay, and you feel like you can do that with your time commitments?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that was my question. Thank you.
Uh, Member Nelson.
Oh.
Uh, before we go to anyone else to say anything, let me make it real clear. I like Mr. Perez. I see him at a lot of places and I just saw him at Arbor Day recently. And, uh, I think that Mr. Perez would be a good appointee to the P and Z. He's obviously a good appointee to the T E C. I was just throwing a curveball because I didn't realize we were looking to do both tonight. That's the first thing, you know, I didn't have any idea that was part of the deal. Um, the guys who were there, stay there. And I think that if you were to move over or maybe not move over, certainly that would be a real good spot for you. But I don't know that I want to fire somebody to do it.
Again, I, the, the code says at least one of the members of T E C may also be a member of P and Z.
At least.
At least.
But we don't have to fire somebody.
I just, that's what the code says. I know that we've always had one. I'm not aware in the history there's ever been two. It's up to council, of course, but when I hear that he's required to leave T E C, I don't, not sure the code says that. Code says at least.
Well, I certainly don't want to lose him on T E C.
At least one of the members of the commission. So if there's something later, we determine whatever you want to do that would, we may have to readdress it. But at this time, I just want to point out that the code for appointment in terms of office for P and Z says at least one of the members of T E C may also be a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's the T E C rule.
So you're saying it's possible to have our Spideau, Grant, uh, that's right, Grant.
Yeah.
Uh, Woody, and we could do Perez and he could stay on T E C and be P and Z and not have to remove the other, the two, could be two that go to both meetings.
I'm telling you, I don't see where the code prohibits.
Well, then what you're saying is you can do that.
Now, whether it's a wise decision is up to council and the, and the issues you have when you have two members on two different boards. You know, those types of issues practically. I'm just telling you, I don't see where the code calls out one liaison, one, I don't see a prohibition in the code.
And, 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 I, talking to lawyers are tricky, I get. But all I'm saying is that can be done.
As I said.
Don't go the code says. Just say, yes, it can or no, it can't. Yes, it can.
Yes, that's up to your discretion.
Yes, it can. That's all I'm looking to hear. Um, council, where are you going with that?
Uh, wait a minute, let me re.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Let me remind you, we have a motion on the table, but now I want to modify it because of what Mr. Fason just did to us. Um, since we do have four open seats, permanent seats on P and Z, and I'd like to modify, who's the second?
I do.
Okay, I, I'd like to modify my motion to approve, uh, Woody Rice, Jane Spideau, uh, Romy Grant, and, uh, Aaron Fason to the four permanent seats for a term to expire on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
My second still stands with discussion.
Member Stokoe, discussion.
Yeah, I just want to clarify with the city attorney. Is there a place in the code that says you cannot serve on two boards?
There's a place in the code that says it's a policy of the council not to have a person serve on more than one board.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yes.
So that's kind of where I'm going with this. I don't really want to go down the hole of trying to get two people on serving. I, I think that the code was pretty clear on not serving on multiple boards, but except with this one exception. Um, I also want to make it very clear, I would be very interested in Mr. Perez serving on the board. But now, understanding that you don't want to give up your T E C spot and I, I would like Woody to continue in that. I think he's done a great job. Um, that is why I'm voting in this way. If a seat does open up, um, and you're wanting to do that instead of T E C or the liaison spot and you can serve on both opens up, um, and Woody's not in that role, I would be very interested in it. I think you do a great job. I just go back to, I, what I look for, which again, I think the advisory boards are for us to make good, sound decisions, is a well-balanced board and I, I really like our board at P and Z right now where it balances a lot of different competing interests and it helps me to make my decisions better on council. So that is why my second stands.
And Vice Mayor, on your motion, I just want to clarify, I think you said as permanent members, but it's a regular member.
I would, I would just add to Member Stokoe that you talked about you like to have the, the variety. I can't think of a better variety than Woody staying in the position he's on and Mr. Perez coming on in the same position. But it's not really the same, but it's the same position, but it just gives us two, clearly, it, it doesn't take a lot to realize it would be two different viewpoints. I don't think that's a bad thing to have coming from the T, T E C, I need my bingo card, from the T E C to the P and Z. And, uh, I, I don't have a problem with, with that part. Um, Member Nelson.
I agree with you. I, I think you would have different viewpoints. And if our goal is to have different viewpoints, then having Tom on both boards would be good.
I think it's, uh, to me, it's kind of a win-win and, and Mr. Fason, you know, I've known you since you were a little, so it's got nothing to do with you coming on the board here. You know how I feel about you. I think there's a lot to be offered here, uh, the knowledge of the T E C and the environment and the passion he has for that. And then you put him in a position on the P and Z, um, where he can share that. At the same time, Woody is sharing his, uh, you know, his developer thing, whatever we want to call that side of it. And I don't really like to say it's a side because again, let's not forget that these boards, and I do think we forget sometimes, not you guys necessarily, but they are advisory boards. There shouldn't be that big an argument. This is what I'd like to advise. And, uh, then up here where we'll hear all the time, well, they don't listen to us. Well, we do listen to you. But if you don't want to advise, got elections coming up before too long. You know, I'm not being silly here. I mean, that's just, I've, I've given the analogy a million times. For eight years, I've been on the headsets upstairs. And I say what I think they should do and I've been doing this forty years and I think I know more than they do sometimes. But they don't have to do what I say. So I'm, what I'm getting at is whoever gets on these boards needs to take on the fact that they're advisory boards. And I like the idea of Mr. Perez and Mr. Rice on the same boards a, a, in that same role. And I had a lawyer, our lawyer, our attorney, say, yes, that can be done. I'd like to see what we can do about going that direction. So with that, we have a motion on the floor, um, for the four you mentioned. So I guess where we go from there is, uh, take a roll call vote on that. Is that correct? Let's take a roll call vote on the, uh, motions on the floor.
Mayor Diesel.
No.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
No.
Member Nelson.
No.
I don't know, they, I got on there. Uh, it doesn't pass three to two. I need another motion. Uh, Member, uh, Nelson.
I would move to appoint, um, Jane Spideau, Romy Grant, um, Aaron Fason, and Tom Perez to the dual role that is now held by Woody. That would be my most.
Not here in my mind.
And I, and I, and I could live. Woody, I hope you don't. I'm still, I still love you. Um, and Woody is also in the dual role. Can you live with that?
No, no, you had too many people.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, so Aaron, sorry. Grant. So it would be Woody, Jane, Romy, and Tom. Am I right?
Yes.
That's four. And Woody and Tom being a dual role.
Yes. That's four. That's what we need. We need four. We're putting two in that, that position. I need a second.
You got it. Second.
Got a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Robinson, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Nope.
Member Stokoe.
No.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes. Passes. I was waiting for somebody to say that. It passes three to two. Um, I, I, everybody who we, and we're not done yet because we've still got the alternate part, but everybody who's been mentioned here, I, I appreciate you and, uh, appreciate you, appreciate all you guys, appreciate you, Jane. And, uh, I think we, I think we have a, a stronger board. I mean, I, no matter what you think about it, you've got two very good representatives on both T E C and P and Z. With that, we move on to what part?
The alternate positions now, you have, um, Mr. Fason, who has indicated he would like to stay as an alternate if not appointed as a regular. Mr. Childs has also indicated that if he's not appointed as a regular to be an alternate. And then you've got Mr. Johnston's, uh, applica, application.
We have two?
You have two. Childs, that's correct. Childs will stay as an alternate. So you have one position. And you have, um, Mr. Fason, who now has indicated that he would like to stay. And then you have Mr. Johnston as.
So we have Mr. Fason. Somebody could be nominated.
Yes.
All right, I'm, uh, Vice Mayor.
It's so funny. All right, I'm gonna nominate Aaron Fason as the alternate.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, a second by Member Stokoe, roll call vote.
No discussion?
Roll call vote.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Wow, thank you all. I appreciate it very much and, uh, thank you.
Mayor and, uh, council, on to six E, which is the term of regular member Jim Ball expires on thirty-one January twenty twenty-two, has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to. on 31 January 2022, has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on the Tifa Board, uh, for another three-year term, scheduled to expire on 31 January 2025. Currently, there are no other applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Ball is present.
Mr. Ball, come on up. Well, it will be easy. First of all, we always appreciate all you do with, all you do, so give us your name and a couple of words about what you think.
Uh, Jim Ball, 921 Indian River Avenue, Titusville. It's my pleasure, I think Woody said it well, we, those of us that, uh, agree to serve in any of the positions that council appoint, um, is to, uh, do service to our community and to serve at your pleasure and try to support, uh, those things that, that you guys see and have as a vision for the city. Obviously, the well field and the area four well field that's managed by Tifa, that's a little bit different than any other. Truly not a board or a commission, it's a, it's a management role. Uh, you, you are appointing me to be the management representative, uh, on a committee, uh, for the Titusville Farmington, uh, LLC to manage the north area of wells, critical to the city's future. Uh, it's going, um, nicely, uh, so I'm, I'm very pleased to continue to serve in that capacity if you so wish.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to move forward, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Mr. James Ball to a term to expire on 2025.
Second. You think we have a card?
I, I know, I know, I'm gonna go ahead and take the second. I've got the motion and the second. Call the cards, please. If I get started, I'll always just flip the order, we'll get, we'll get our cards in.
One card, Stan Johnston.
Just keep raising your hand.
Thank you, thank you, Diesel. Coach Diesel. Uh, Stan Johnston here, and, uh, this is an important position, and I'm certainly supporting Mr. Ball in this. Uh, historically, we've had some horrible things happen here in town, and I've even seen it on the graphs, and nobody wants to recognize it. We've overpumped our wells. In other words, you can see it on graphs, in other words, we pump it, uh, the concentration of, uh, chlorides goes in it, we, uh, let it sit for a while, then we pump it again, we pump it hard, we pump them too hard. We've destroyed so many wells, and I'm afraid that's what we're gonna do here. And, 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 and we have a special situation on these particular wells in Farmington. Guess what that is? We have almost no control whatsoever, someone else manages it. Now, we have bungled and fumbled our wells here in Titusville. We've bumbled and fumbled, and over here, over there near, uh, IRC on 50, messed it up. How many years have we, have we left at Idol? We bumbled, we fumbled them over here, over here near Astronaut High School, destroyed them. Now, what are we gonna do? We're gonna have somebody else manage them? So anyhow, I'm just letting, letting you know, and Mr. Mr. Ball know, is, uh, we've got a possibility of bumbling and fumbling again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, roll call vote on this position, please.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Mr. Ball, for all you do, and all the stuff on all the boards. Uh, petitions and requests from the public. Whoever comes up first? Oh, I'm sorry. Is this you?
It's not.
Okay.
No.
Name and address for the record, and we'll go from there, thank you.
Sure. Uh, my name is Jim Cannon, and I am the, uh, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself in person. I am the new intergovernmental coordinator, i.e. government affairs rep for the St. John's River Water Management District. Uh, you might have worked with my predecessor, Abby. Um, I took over the position in mid-December, December 15th, I moved down here from Pittsburgh, uh, just in time, apparently, uh, considering it's been single digits this week.
Wow.
I know, it's hard to fathom. Uh, although I will say, I, I feel somewhat cheated, because I was promised sunshine and warm weather in Florida in the past couple of weeks, uh, it hasn't lived up to that, and I'm, I'm sure it's coming, though. But, um, I did, like I said, I just wanted to introduce myself. My background, uh, prior to this position, I worked for a large electric utility in the Northeast, in external and government affairs. Uh, prior to that, I was involved in, uh, oil and gas development in Pennsylvania, again, a similar role. Um, so my role now, I'm, I'm here to act as a liaison between the Water Management District and all of you, uh, to provide information, answer questions, and, uh, give any kind of direction that I can. So please feel free to utilize me. Um, I don't know the best method, but what I've been, uh, asking city councils, if, if it's okay if I follow up with a mass email, um, just to sort of confirm my, my introduction and, and provide you my contact information directly.
I would assume, yes, sir, that'd be fine.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. I know this name.
Good evening.
Hey, Jesse.
Jesse Wright, 8550 South Washington Avenue, the old ugly-looking Sears Town Mall. Uh, Mayor Diesel and distinguished members of the, uh, city council, I flew this morning from Social Republic of California to attend this meeting. I just want to go through a few timelines. Um, on October 12th, unanimously, we have an approval of the comprehensive plan amendment number 1 dash 2020 by ordinance 29 dash 2021. Master plan was submitted with heights above 60 feet, and everyone knew that that would be the case. On October 26th, we received a letter, uh, from you, uh, Mr. Mayor, that, um, it was approved. We received that on October 26th. On November 29th, uh, Ms. Lisa McCarter, that actually is here now, on behalf of Titusville Mall, filed the CUP, and, um, it's been filed since November 29. And there was a, hearing was supposed to be set for February the 2nd for the P and Z, and the 8th for the city council to pass the CUP. Um, on January the 4th, we received an email from the city requesting a shading study to be done, and, uh, there was nothing mentioned about a 50% open space that we now have to give in order to get this, the master plan completed. On January 18th, we submitted the shading study, and it's already been received by the city. I also responded on an email to the city on a tax abatement, on a 1995 ordinance section 19 dash 100, some 27 years ago during Bill Clinton administration, referring mainly to manufacturing and no other industry to get tax abatement. In my opinion, the city needs to give tax incentive to residential, medical, and retail developers. On January 18th, we received another email indicating from the city, indicating that the occupied floors are the same as habitable floors. That means if we're gonna have observation decks on top of the floors on three different buildings, the city would consider this a habitable, uh, occupied or habitable floor, basically has the same meaning. This is important, because we want to be considered as a mid-rise, not a high-rise, anything over 75 feet. On January 20th, we contacted the state fire marshal in Tallahassee to confirm, if I can have just one more minute-
I'm gonna give you one more minute, because it really sounded like you were gonna write your presentation here, I thought, oh boy, here we go. So you, you can do this in one minute?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, good, one more minute, go.
I am requesting mainly what I have already given out earlier today, um, that the city council would approve abolishing the ordinance that has been in the books since 2005, designating three different properties, ours being one of the three, and also set a CUP at the same time. We can no longer continue having delays in the project. And I have five people that are gonna be coming and discussing the ordinance, and also the, uh, the issues with the tenants that we're having, uh, because of this delay. That's it.
Member Rob- Member Robinson?
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Okay. Are these five people like coming like right now?
Yes.
Okay, let's make sure we stay three minutes, because we're not gonna keep extending here.
Yes.
All right, go ahead, thank you very much, I appreciate the presentation.
If I can have Rodney Honeycutt to come first, followed by William Castle.
Rodney knows about three minutes.
Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue in Titusville.
You got 2:55 to go.
So, um, I want to make sure you knew who I was. So, um, uh, Mr. Wright is particularly asking that, uh, council give advisability of staff to change the, revise the code, uh, to allow the CUP without increasing the open space, um, for the site as it is, as it exists now. And so, it, it's kind of worded weirdly, it says that the 50% shall be native habitat and, um, reserve, preserved, and so there, the native habitat on this site is asphalt jungle, so, uh, it wouldn't, it doesn't make sense. I think maybe there are three sites, and it may, one of them it may pertain to, but not the two Titus Landing or, um, the Titusville Resort and Destination.
Have you talked to the staff?
Yes.
Because quite honestly, we can vote on something that comes in front of us here, but we can't, we can't sit up here and act like we're staff and put it together, so, um, is there anything you want to add to that?
Um, what, Mr. Honeycutt, what I understand he's asking is advisability for staff to come back, um, and get your advisability to see if you would like to take a look at the code as written for those three locations.
Okay, go ahead. Um, I think we got four more people here from this group, though. Thank you.
That's good.
Keep that in mind, get ready.
Uh, William Castle, 1400 Milton Street. Um, so I would like to petition that if we are unable to abolish the code, that we at least alter the 50% requirement, because as Rodney had said, and Jesse, that's just, that's a massive amount of space, you know, I have 22 acres, that's 11 acres, it's, it's gone. Um, especially as a city, if we're looking at improving things, I mean, us demoing this, putting in new stormwater and all that would be a much better improvement than concrete. I mean, I think we can all agree on that. Um, if not, I mean, I don't know, is there any variance or any sort of way that we could just maybe keep the ordinance and work around it on that?
And, and that's where we'd have to go to staff and get an advisement on that, we couldn't pop that out and say, we can do this, or we can do that, because we don't know. But once we get an advisement from them, we can be, be more specific about what can be done and how it can be done.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I think you make some valid points.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, petitions and requests. Wait a minute, didn't they have more? Okay. Here, can we do two more first, Stan? Stan?
Ashby Pisante, uh, 5510 River Oaks Drive, um, I am a current, excuse me, I am a current tenant of the Titusville Mall, um, I am a local owner-operator of game space, we just opened back in October, and, uh, we made a significant, uh, excuse me, um, I have a lot of childhood memories of growing up here in Titusville. Um, my family has lived here since I went back to Lakefront Montessori, um, when my friends and myself decided that we were interested in starting a business, it was a no-brainer that we were gonna do it in Titusville. Um, I actually had childhood memories of going to Sears Town Mall, getting, you know, portraits done at Sears, getting our tires changed, the weird stuff, of course, and, um, when I actually found out that the mall was still around, um, I peeked into it, I checked it out. Um, one of the things that really signified me that this was the place for us to start was the extensive blueprints and planning that was the resort and destination that was coming up. Um, we, as a business, made some compromises in order to get into the mall before that, so we could secure our spot at the new location, um, and, uh, we made those decisions based off the different zoning approvals, the council approvals and stuff like that. And in doing so, uh, like I mentioned before, we made a few compromises on space, um, as a retail and arcade establishment that we're looking to serve the community, both kids of the real persuasion and kids at heart. Um, we knew we needed a lot of space, and while Titusville Mall didn't have that, we figured with the new space, we'll be able to move into that, we'll be able to grow into that and become, uh, just one of the area's main draws into that area. Um, with that in mind, I implore the council to continue with the previous master plans as they were approved, as, uh, further delays would, um, actually set us back, as well as any current and future tenants that are also in the area, um, and would, uh, set us back as our goals as a business to become, uh, one of the hotspots in Titusville. And that's it for me.
Thank you, questions? I see none, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi.
Julie Shimiree, 5105 Belusha Avenue, Titusville, Florida. So basically, I'm agreeing with the, with the rest of them are saying, um, pretty much I have a salon inside of the Titusville Mall, going on three years, but according to the agenda and timeline that was given to Jesse, I was pretty much forced to get on out. Um, and I decided to take that break until they were able to get things up and running to put my new business back into the new location, but however, with the delays, it's going to cause some delays in my business, which I don't want to happen. Um, just like the young guy that just spoke, uh, we wanted to secure our spot in the new mall. I mean, I have a very thriving business, a wonderful clientele, um, I have four children, might I add, I worked through the pandemic, through having twins, and just like Jesse, I don't want nothing to stop, stop us or to get in our way, because I don't want no delays on my business. So I'm asking that, you know, whatever Jesse is asking for, then he pretty much gets it. Um, I appreciate him, and that's just that.
Uh, Member Stokel?
Yeah, and this is probably more so for staff, if we're gonna be going toward advisability, and we might not have the answers now, I remember when this was brought before us, I was concerned that they may be trying to put too much on the piece of property, and now I feel like we're hitting that point, we're now at CUPs, and it's looking like we made a mistake, or staff might have made a mistake, where I think that the plan might have failed to take into account certain things, so if we get that advisability, I would, it would help me to make that decision, knowing that going forward.
I remember you saying that. Uh, next up? I don't, oh, they're coming from behind you, Stan, you didn't see them. Oh, she's hiding back there.
Yes. Um, hi, I'm Lisa McCarter, Country Club Drive. I, too, agree with just this, um, the voicing of the opinion that, um, this ordinance, in reading it, it just doesn't seem to suit the property, because it's not, there are no wetlands, there are no, um, animals, any, any nature on the property, so I would just also request that, um, allow staff to take a look at it and, and come back, and, um, of course, we hope that, you know, the 50% is just, just seems too much for what it is, the space it is, and, um, we would just request that guys take another look at it.
What do you think about the concern that there might be too much on this area? You know, it could be that we're gonna get too much, too tall, too fast? No?
Well, I, I think even if it was, you know, even what's there, even if there was less there, to have 50% um, wetlands and, you know, just some natural habitat, it's just not, that's not what the space has been since, gosh, since it was there, since it was placed there 60 years ago. So the ordinance that, as, as I read it, it's like Rodney mentioned, it's, it doesn't, the wordage is not, it doesn't pertain to what's actually there. It may pertain to one of the three properties, but not the other two.
Okay, we'll get some advisement, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Got everybody? Okay, Stan?
Stan Johnston, uh, graduate engineer, I sent you a, an email yesterday, it- Stan Johnston, uh, graduate engineer. I sent you a, uh, an email yesterday. It was about, um, complaints I'm filing to the board for, against Snow, Fisher and Sanders. And it said on, if there's any errors I made, somebody contact me. And up and some, so somebody did. I think it was about five o'clock in the morning. And, uh, it, that I made some errors. You believe that? Yeah, yeah. So, uh, actually, it was, uh, it was Kevin Cook. And by golly, he's right. I've made some errors. So I haven't sent it. I want you to know is I have not sent that, those complaints, okay? So, uh, but, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm approaching you because I'm representing the owners at eleven fifty-six Mockingbird Lane for this, uh, development known as Elizabeth Oaks, also sometimes called Elizabeth Townhomes. And so you've got a preliminary plat here. And what I'm, I'm charging is I'm charging fraud by the professional engineer and the, and the survey of this project named Snow because what they've done, if they, they have a survey that is completely invalid. And I cannot get the city to review it, although I've sent them, as, you know, I'm, I've been a surveyor. I've sent them a piece of paper, part of the survey, and it looks like it's a bloodbath because I've redlined it so much. So what they're doing is the fraud they're involving is, is that, is that along the property line, they're making it, putting it as a ten-foot easement, ten-foot ingress, egress, easement. Whereas right now is they have two-way traffic. You can't get two-way traffic in, in a ten-foot easement. So it's a deprivation of them. Now, why are they doing this? They're doing this so that they, they are having what's called a tight. This is a tight development, very tight. So they want that property. However, what are you going to do? Four properties being accessed on a, uh, a ten-foot ingress, egress, and they forgot. The engineer forgot to put any easements for sewer, water and electric, electricity. Now, what we have is our ordinance right now says if you have one lot, the most narrow you can have is twenty-five foot for a, for a flag, for a stem for a flaglot. And they're only giving ten feet. Oh, if you have a right-of-way, a minimum width of a right-of-way by code is fifty feet. What are they given? Ten feet. This is why I call it fraud. They're taking, they're depriving the owners of rights by what they're doing. And it's dishonest what they've done here. So I've been asking council or somebody, say, hey, listen, why doesn't the city have their surveyor? Look at this. Another minute maybe. You got questions?
I see no questions. Um, we could, we could discuss that with staff, but, uh, let me go from there. Um, go ahead. This is request.
Woody Rice, five-on-five Indian River Avenue. Um, I've been working on a three-acre hotel site out at the end of Helenhauser for several months now. I've met with staff several times. And, um, it's come up that, uh, there's a old billboard in this sign, site. So I always sat down with staff and we were trying to figure out, all right, how do we solve this issue here? And we had a game plan, but then staff found some code in the sign ordinance, uh, in the development ordinance, in the sign ordinance. Here's what it says about billboards. That one, billboards have to be on a one-acre site. My site's three acres. It's for a hotel. One acre, take one acre away, the deal is done. It has to be on one acre and you cannot variance the size of the lot. It also says billboards have to be on two-hundred-foot of road frontage and you can't variance that either. And I ninety-five, which this property fronts, is not road frontage because it's not accessible from, other than the interchange. So you can't do that. And it also says that billboards can be the only use on the lot and if anything else in the lot. So what, what that does is takes my client's three-acre site and says, sorry, you bought it with a billboard, but you can't develop anything on the lot with it. We can't split the lot because it doesn't have any road frontage, okay? And even if we want to split the lot and say it had road frontage and we took it to one acre, then you can't build the intended use of, of what the remaining two acres would provide. So I'm asking for tonight is advisability to change the sign ordinance, okay, to, and I, I don't want to open up the bucket of worms because, you know, any time you change the code, you have to look long-term of what it does. So my, my suggestion would be advisability to staff to look at a grant, not grandfathering, but any current billboard that's currently on the sign, on the I ninety-five corridor that fronts I ninety-five. Count the billboard as an accessory structure on that site. It does not have to comply with the two-hundred-foot road frontage, the one-acre minimum lot and the, the allowed accessory or the more than one use on the same lot. So basically, the billboard could, it has to stay where it is anyways, but the hotel could coexist on the same lot with the billboard is what I'm asking.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm putting that through my head, the, the one-acre deal. Wow. Uh, this is request. Anybody else? It looked like we're done with that. We need to, um, look at some advisabilities, uh, on a couple of these things. We got the, the Jesse Sears thing and we've certainly got that advisability right there. Uh, you want to?
Yeah, I'll start. I, I just appreciate you all bringing all the stuff tonight to the council for sure. Um, the first one to me, uh, with Woody Rice, I, I certainly would like to, um, hear an advisability. I'm not really sure why you even need an acre or a billboard. I don't understand the history behind it. But one thing I, I've realized since I've been on council is the fact that a lot of stuff that we are doing today, all this development we're doing, it wasn't even perceived back then. It, it was just, you know, we, we kind of had a small view of where we could go. And we're now growing. So, uh, this is part of growing pains. So I would certainly suggest that, uh, we ask staff for advisability to look at our sign ordinance, uh, and make it reasonable where you can cohabitate a billboard on, uh, a piece of land that is going to be, uh, developed, especially the existing billboards we have. Is that clear enough? He's looking at money.
His request is ninety-five. Are we talking about ninety-five? Are we talking about city?
Well, as I said, my concern is that you're opening it up and we're just specifically talking about ninety-five. So we probably need to just look at it to make sure there's consistency, uh, and it, and it's reasonable what we have for sign.
So you're asking staff to come back with maybe a, a report to you on a future agenda of some of the issues and then get further advisability of what you would like in an ordinance, to try and draft an ordinance?
Those words in my mouth.
And overall signage. Yeah, he mentioned ninety-five, but he also mentioned you got to have an acre for the sign.
Yeah.
I think that's unrealistic. So I just would like to see, uh, staff look that over and maybe say, here's some things, you may see some things and you say, why is that in there? You might see some things, say, well, this is why we need it. You're looking for a future agenda item to have that discussion.
Specifically to billboards?
Yes. Yes, but I would also say in advisement, if you happen to see something else, it makes no sense because I certainly didn't know that the billboard needed an acre. But I don't want you to overlook something. You could bring that back too and say, we also found that if you have a fence, you, whatever, you can't have one. I don't know. But just kind of update it. And then, uh...
On the second, um, well, I think I know how to ask the question. I'm just, I'm, I'm a little concerned about this one, uh, for sure. Um, and, and I only know what I'm hearing tonight. Um, first thing, I certainly want to, uh, let the tenants know. I know you're concerned about the schedule, but when you're doing development, the schedule is going to slip. So there is no magic day that this is, thing's going to happen. There's going to be other slippage. And one of the things I know we're going to have, because I'm in logistics, is the fact of getting material. You just can't get the material when you want it. So, um, I know what you want to do, I'm a business person myself, um, but if this helps the situation, I don't think that, um, because I'm reading what Jesse Wright, uh, gave us, um, he's looking for us to get this done by February because he's going to be in town. And the way things work in government, things don't work fast at all for sure. So he's asking for us to abolish the, uh, ask for an advisability to abolish the fifty, fifty percent open space ordinance. Um, we can, we can look at it.
So, so I, and just like the other one, we will come back with advisability to you with a staff report on what our findings are.
We, we need more information, I can tell you. Because I, I don't think we, we're smart enough to ask the right question. Um, but I understand what their challenge is. But I think what everyone needs to understand is this is not going to be an overnight thing. It's going to take a while to come up with it. And I know he has a schedule, so I, he should not be expecting that something's going to happen to resolve his problem and he can get back on schedule. It just doesn't work that way. No. But that's all we can do is ask for advisability and go from there.
And that's what I was saying. We, we got to go to staff on that. We can't just up here and fix it.
Right.
So you, you good with that?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. We already said happy birthday to the ninety-eight-year-old. She looks more awake than I am.
Stop.
City manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, we're on to consent agenda items. City Council, do you have any questions of staff on any of the consent agenda items A through K?
No, 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 I'm...
Uh, Council, do you want to pull any of the consent agenda items A through K?
No.
Um, Council and Mayor and Council, I will read, uh, consent agenda item A through K for the record and then we'll take cards. Consent agenda item eight A, approved purchase of seven stalker radars for FY twenty-two police vehicles. Uh, consent agenda item eight B, approve forfeiture funds to purchase RAP safety restraints. Consent agenda item eight C, approve the use of a piggyback contract to purchase web-based code enforcement software. Consent agenda item eight D, approve amendment one to health plan ASO services, master service agreement with Aetna to include EAP services. Consent agenda item eight E, approve the award of the bid for sheet metal materials for Public Works. Consent agenda item eight F, approve stormwater CIP plan phase one work order number one. Consent agenda item eight G, approve and authorize the amendment of the contract C V, uh, C one-seven P zero-eight for flexible spending cafeteria plan administrator. Consent agenda item eight, uh, H, approve the award of Area Three Well Field Electrical Project Design and Construction Services. Consent agenda item eight I, approve the budget amendment for work order for engineering services for the Morning Dove Water Treatment Sand Filter Rehabilitation Project. Consent agenda item eight J, approve the contract award for the annual sewer manhole repair contract. And consent agenda item eight K, approve the work order for engineering services for the Armstrong Drinking Water Booster Pump Station.
Okay. Council, any questions? I see none. Call the cards, please.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, one person has submitted for six items.
No.
Um, members.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir. Hold on one second, go ahead.
May I have a point of order here? Um, I don't have any problem with Mr. Johnston coming up and going through his litany of, of statements. But what I would like, I'm just a little old country fellow from Texas and I like things in order. And I'm asking that he tells us that he's going to speak on A, B, C, H, nine, whatever he wants to do. But when he starts speaking, he goes from A, he goes from B, he goes from C, he goes from D and follow through until he's finished. Would you please, can, is that acceptable?
And we have done that, but we have asked that before. I will say, it appears to me that the last meeting over there...
He did good.
He, he stayed on task, he stayed on topic. And I do believe he went A, B, C, D. So if you can do that again, we'd be pretty impressed. But, so yeah, and, and that's, that's certainly appropriate. Yeah, and I think you can do that. So, uh, Mr. Johnston, you got your ten minutes, sir. And I believe you did that last time and you were on topic last time. And that's what I'd like to see again. I felt very edified when you were done.
Thank you. Stan Johnston, uh, I'm speaking on, uh, the six, six items, eight F, G, H, I and J. And on those, I'm opposed to all of those instructions. And, uh...
This is where you tell us why.
Maybe we have, there's some cookies. We can all have cookies.
Come again. Start with G.
Okay, okay. Well, uh, maybe you start with eight F.
F.
Eight F is, uh, if you look at the eight F, it talks about Geo-Centec Consultants. Well, that's a special company because it was mentioned back in, in two thousand and nineteen, February twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. And it's been mentioned numerous times after that. Is that if you remember on that date, is that, uh, Mayor Johnson had a table back here, and, uh, and he had on that, he had books from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and nineteen. And he claimed that the city of Titusville paid seventy thousand, about seventy thousand dollars for a, a report and study of, of this correspondence, that all this correspondence was from Stan Johnson to the city. And that this consultant who was paid seventy thousand dollars came up with a report that says pretty much, if you conclusion is the Stan, that Stan Johnson is a worthless engineer. And later on, it was determined that it was Geo-Centec Consultants that was the engineering company that did this seventy thousand dollars report. Well, interestingly is that, uh, although Mr. Johnson claimed many times that I received the report and he talked to, uh, uh, the city, city attorney about it, is that I never got the report. And when I do a request, formal request for records, they can't find it. When I do a formal request for the records for the contract to do the work, they can't find the records. When they find, find a, a formal request for the, the invoice of seventy thousand dollars, that doesn't exist either. When I go to the office of Geo-Centec Consultants, they say they didn't do it. However, council members have been contending to promote this thing about Stan Johnson being a worthless engineer with a, by seventy thousand dollars report that doesn't exist by Geo-Centec Consulting Engineers that say they didn't do it, that, uh, that we cannot even find a contract about. This is, uh, please, you're interrupting me, uh, Mr., Mr., uh, City Attorney, you're interrupting my work here. You're interfering with my, uh, progress. You're talking to someone while I'm trying to...
Come on, stand this way.
All right. Well, he needs to, he needs to understand too.
Let's go, let's go.
Sarah Stokel needs to understand because she's involved in this, what?
Here, let's go.
Fraud. And so is this one? And so is this one right here. They continue to promote that, that this is true and there's nothing, there's not a bit of truth to it at all. By golly, if you look at ORB page, so forth and like that, we've got, I've got word for word testimony of that and it continues today. But Stan Johnson has this seventy thousand dollars report against him, which doesn't exist. And so this is called, what it's called, it's called F R A U D. By Mrs. Stokel, Mr. Rob, Mr. Jordan and Mrs., Mr.
Yeah, uh, first of all, you're down to six minutes and you've got five more things to talk about.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the thing is, is that, the, the other day I had about fourteen and I couldn't go through all of them.
Yeah, well, now you've only got five to go.
Yeah, okay. So, so anyhow, cutting it short enough, is, and then this also has to do with, this is your handout for that.
Okay.
So, so the thing is, is that, is that, is that the fraud continues by these three council members, which, you know, I think is, is not really good. So...
All right, let's go.
I'll go to the next one. How about I go to the next one? Okay, can I do that? Okay, let's, let's go to, um, let's, let's jump G for a second and go to H, I, J and K because I want to lump them together because it has to do with Mr. Stauffer.
Is G one of yours? Did you have?
G, okay, I'll speak about it.
I'll speak on G, at least stay right in order.
Okay, speak on G. Not, not much to say about that. Okay, H, I, J and K is, uh, is that this has to do with, with water resources and Mr. Stauffer.
So are you done with G? Because, because you didn't say anything about it.
Yes, H, I, J and K, I'm going on to that right now.
Then he's done with G?
Don't take my time.
Take it off.
Go on down. Okay, so here we got, is that, is that this has to do, here's the handout. Mr. Stauffer, Mr. Stauffer. What's that got to do with?
Take your time. Take your time.
How about that? And all of that, it has to do with don't answer the phone. So during this time, they wouldn't answer the phone. Mr. Stauffer wouldn't. His... And they still don't. I still have a trespass warning against me, still active. I can't even go... As a professional engineer, I'm handicapped, I'm interfered with in doing my work. So anyhow, Mr. Stauffer has a... Has a... He wants all this money, but they can't even answer the phones. And I've talked to you about this before. And it's an embarrassment to our city government. It's a disservice to our community, that we have... We're spending, for example, we're spending over $11 million on a pork bell project to improve the... Take more pollutants out of our recycled water, whereas what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to add more fertilizer when we use it for irrigation. So there's a lot of nonsense with Mr. Stauffer, and I filed a report, a complaint, to the board against him. So on this, that's why I oppose all these... All these... That's H, I, J, and K. And he's involved in... What I'm talking about, this spraying sewage. And what I didn't mention about the sewage discharge, which was mentioned sometime other time, and that is that after December the 19th, sewage was still flowed into the river. But Mr. Stauffer has a consent order approved by council that says sewage stopped on December the 19th. It's nonsense. Yet he sold it to you guys, and so did FDEP. And the Florida Today won't report it otherwise. Fact is, Florida Today won't even report about the sewage spray on cars and people and food that happened for four months. They won't report it. So what we have is, what's Trump call it? Fake news. Don't report it. So you're seeing what's going on with Mr. Stauffer. He's been dishonest. He's involved in illegal discharge of sewage. He's involved in illegal spraying of people with piss and poop, COVID, hepatitis, salmonella, you name it. In other words, bloodborne pathogens also, when you're talking about municipal sewage. It's a serious issue. And it's... He's the guy that's involved with it. Remember what happened? November settlement? What was it for? Flint, Michigan. How much was it? Was it $100 million? 200, 300 million? Settlement? Flint, Michigan did the... How about $626 million settlement? How much money does the city of Tiesville have? If they have to have a few people that get hepatitis and exposed, they find out about six years from now. Yeah, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. $626 million to Flint, Michigan. That's because of government corruption. What kind of government corruption do we have in the city of Tiesville that's headed by Mr. Stauffer? We got plenty of it. I'm set up with it. I'm embarrassed. I mean, I live in this town, and I'm embarrassed by what's going on by Mr. Stauffer. Well, what's going on is a really horrible thing. And what I would like you to do, which you are afraid to do and you will not do it, is you won't get a professional engineer to disagree, to come up here and say Stan Johnson is wrong. Because, you know why? Because Stan Johnson is right. And if he comes and opposes me, guess what? I can report him to the board for making false statements. And I don't have anybody, so far, nobody has opposed all these written statements I have made about Mr. Stauffer. Nobody. And nobody will. At least no competent professional engineer, because he's crooked. He's done illegal, he's operating in fraud, dishonesty. And I don't think he should be operating on any of these items that I'm talking to you about. Go ahead and do it if you want to. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through 8K.
Second.
I've got a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson. Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously.
On to item 9B, which is ordinance number 2-2022, Correcting Errors in the Landscape Code. And the city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number 2-2022, An Ordinance of the City of Tiesville, Florida, Amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30 Development Standards, Sections 30-2 Applicability, Subsection 1 Landscaping Requirements, 30-331 Applicability, 30-337 Permitted Uses Within Landscape Buffer Yard, and 30-338 Natural Buffer Yards, to correct Scrivener's errors and to amend the term Landscape Buffer Yards, amending Sections 30-332 Required Landscape Yards and 30-335 Description of Landscape Yards, to clarify existing landscape yard standards and to the standards applicable to the downtown mixed-use DMU district in the event of a conflict, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on their 5 January 2022 meeting and unanimously 6-0 recommended approval as written. PNC wanted to stress and clarify that the intent of Table 30-332 is to refer to Exhibit A Buffer's map, and that this map takes precedence. City Council has previously approved advisability for staff to correct Scrivener's errors and codes to eliminate internal inconsistencies in the code. The attached ordinance makes the following corrections. It corrects references to code section numbers, standardizes the term landscape yard, corrects notations with tables, clarifies downtown mixed-use DMU. Standards apply within zoning district by removing the sentence, "Where there is a conflict, the most restrictive regulation shall apply," unquote, and related to DMU standards. Mr. Parrish is available to answer questions that you may have. This is your public hearing, final and second reading of this ordinance.
Mr. Parrish, anything?
No, sir. I'm here to be answering any questions you might have.
Um, I'm dumb. I bet he's got something else, or vice mayor?
You talking about me?
Yeah.
No, actually, I just wanted to understand the PNC. I think that the city manager caught the word. I think that's supposed to clarify parity. But why does that need to rest so...
You look at page 301 of your packet, you'll see an exhibit there that... It's a map that shows several roads within the city that have a landscape buffer along a right-of-way above and beyond our normal standard. And so what the PNC wanted to stress was that this correction here is stating that, yes, there is a minimum landscape buffer along a right-of-way, but this exhibit here on this page that is referenced takes precedent. So, for example, on some roads, there is a 30-foot landscape buffer, and on some roads, there is a 50-foot landscape buffer.
So how do you process that?
This all started because there was some confusion as to the standard. One part of our code says, in the same ordinance, it says that there's a minimum 20-foot landscape buffer, but someone missed looking at this particular exhibit and proposed a development to us that was incorrect. So we had to go back and ask them to make that change. This exhibit was approved originally by council back in 2006. So nothing's changed as far as this exhibit.
The question I was really asking, and I appreciate that, question, but I need to understand, how does staff know to look at that as taking precedent? Is there wording there that says, okay, this will take precedent? Going to ask?
Yes, sir. If you take a look at... Let me see. On page 299 of your packet, you'll see a table there that tells us what the rights... What the buffers are. So if you're a single family, you're going to be along... Or any one of these types of development types, you're going to be along a public right-of-way. It's going to be a B-type buffer. It tells you to... So then it goes to another table on the next page that tells you what that size buffer is. So in those tables... I apologize. I thought there was a... I'm trying to find that reference. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. Top of page 300 of your packet. So there's a notation underneath, at the end of that first table, that will clearly reference you to the exhibit.
Okay. That's what I want to... I just wanted to make sure it's clear to staff. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any... Let's see. Vice Mayor Jordan, so you're already gone?
I'm done.
All right. Any other questions? We ready to make a move? I got... Do I? No cards after 9:30. Come on up, Stan. I didn't have to ask for the card, did I? Sorry.
You got a handout on this one, Stan Johnston. And this is the handout. Same handout you had before on this one. Is that what you see tonight is a number of times is the codes just don't fit. They don't fit logic, they don't fit a lot of things. And in this case, is we're looking for corrections. In this particular case, this is another case, codes. You have a sketch plat approved by council. Sketch plat is based on what? Based on a survey. Guess what? According to my understanding, is that the surveyor never reviewed it. Never reviewed the sketch plat. Never reviewed the survey. Okay? Okay. Guess what? We have a preliminary plat since it's been in the process for over four months for this same project. Surveyor, our city surveyor, is never, as my understanding, has never been involved in the survey, the sketch plat, or the preliminary plat. And we've got big problems. Like I told you, it was a bloodbath. This is a... So I'm looking for, in this case, is that correction. There's a correction needed for this situation. Situation like you're making a correction right now. In other words, what sense does it make? In other words, there's a banner dispute that's not shown. There's all kinds of things, like name of the street, the clearance for the access road that are required by what's called minimum technical standards. It's not there. The survey is invalid. And yet, we're moving forward, and we're going to back up. Of course, it costs a lot of money. A lot of money. Somebody's going to lose a lot of money on that. And that's going to be over $20,000. So I'm asking for you guys to, in addition to looking at this landscape code and the other ones that we just considered, just like what Woody Rice was talking about, a sign that... I thought that was crazy. I thought that was entertaining what he brought up. Unbelievable. The codes didn't make any sense. And then something about another code we had about the 50% for that development over at Sears-Terre Haute Town, and talking about, you know, whether it has wetlands or not, and it's just assful. So anyhow, I think that we need to do what we need to do about improving our codes. And in this case, is that having a sketch plat that doesn't involve the surveyor, our city surveyor, and have a preliminary plat that doesn't involve our city surveyor is what? Complete nonsense. So I'm asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? All right, now we're ready. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve ordinance number 2022, Correcting Errors in the Landscape Code.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor, a second by Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan. Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager.
All the way to 12A, which is new business. This is the Tiesville Environmental Commission's recommendations related to underground storage facilities. During the 10 November 2021 Regular TEC Meeting, the commission approved a recommendation to city council to give staff advisability to review the hazardous material technical manual requirements and amend the sections as needed. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Parrish, basically, what do you think about that recommendation from the TEC? I mean, and I don't mean that to, you know, be back and forth. Do you feel like we're adequate where we are?
The CUP that's mentioned on your agenda packet on page 375 was partly related to that. It was approved consistent with this section of the hazardous technical manual. I believe what I understand from the TC's conversation was that they were looking to see maybe there's some additional regulation or criteria that needs to be placed in here. If we do need to do that, we probably do need to get some expert help do that. But generally, the CUP was approved consistent with this.
Member Robinson.
Yes. And that's when I read this, I don't know who your hazmat person...
You don't have one on staff to address...
But to comply with this, to find out what's going on, what's the update, you would need a hazmat specialist to give us advisement on this, whether we are...
We believe so, yes.
Hmm?
We believe we would need to get a third-party expert to help us out with this.
That's correct.
Member Nelson.
Question, what about using the county? Looking at what the county's doing to see if there's something in there that maybe we're not doing.
It's possible. I'm not familiar with what the county has compared to this criteria. I... What I understand, even our regulations here are generally above and beyond what is standard practice because of the ACC, because of the area critical concern. But we could certainly look into what the county has.
Maybe we're just looking at one or two and saying, okay, are they doing something we're not doing? And if they are, why are they doing that?
Just so you know, if you remember about a year ago, there was a CUP. They had to go through more fuel tanks, because they were going to be located inside our area of critical concern.
Yeah. I've gone through it a couple of times.
We do the cards on this one yet? No. Let me call the cards here. I need to hear more. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There may be no card on this, right? Okay. All right. And then call the cards.
Yes, sir. One card, Stan Johnston.
My name's Stan Johnston. I was at the TEC meeting when this was brought forward to the staff to do some kind of a look into this issue, because Mr. Rice was reading it, and I'm listening to him reading it. And it, from all appearances, it's... I can read it as that the gas station that we approved did not meet these requirements. Didn't meet it. And so I'm going to ask for you to table it, because I don't see that staff has really provided that. I think that, in other words, is that I don't know whether they've done it, whether Brad has done it, but at least he ought to go back and report this to TEC if he hasn't done so, and tell him what he just told you. Because they're the one who initiated this. And in other words, if it comes from Brad now to here, you can say no, and it's disbanded. And TEC never got any early input about it. Nothing at all. And it just closed it. So this is like, just like what happens to me, is y'all just shut my mouth at many times. So I'm asking for the... What appears to me is what TEC is asking for is some advisability in looking into this issue, because from everything they could say is that it just doesn't fit. It didn't agree with the approval that staff gave for that gas station over there on 405. So I'm asking for, what do you call it? Table it. Go back to TEC. They haven't talked to TEC. If he hasn't done it, I could be wrong. Maybe he's talked to TEC. That's all.
All right, thank you. Would this be accurate if I ordered it this way, that we're to consider the TEC recommendation for an underground storage facility study? In a nutshell? Is that their concern? Because I'm really trying to understand what it is we're trying to get a study on. And it sounds to me like it does go back to the CUP for Wawa.
I can read you a little bit from the meeting minutes from the TEC. So just before this motion was made, they made a motion to approve that CUP by a 5-2 vote. Member Majak voted no, because there was no reconciliation to a system failure in the area of critical concern, and there should be a backup tank to capture the 110% volume if there was a system failure. Member Young voted no, because these are toxins that just don't go away, and the tank should be above ground. So I know there was a presentation by the applicant for that CUP. I answered their questions. That CUP was found to be consistent with the regulations here. So it was approved 5-2, of course, with two objections. The next motion by Vice Chairman Rice was made to recommend to city council advisability for staff[1788.57] to recommend to city council advisability for staff to review this section of the code of the hazardous materials technical manual, second by Perez, there's nothing more. So it sounded to me like they were just looking for, I guess there was some discussion at the meeting about what this section of the code really meant. They did ultimately find it to be, that, that petition that was before them, consistent with this section of the code. But I guess that what they're asking for is to look into it to see if it probably needs to be clarified more. And when we discussed it internally, we thought, well, if we need to look at this, we probably need to have someone with some outside, third party experience with this to be able to give us better advice as to whether we really do need to, uh, adjust this or evaluate this in a different way.
What was your recommendation when we looked at the C U P for Wawa? Uh, go back and remind me because we approved it clearly. And, um, uh, we also asked, I'll ask a lot of questions of the, uh, corporation, um, of Wawa on their safety. And first of all, the numbers of problems they've ever had, which was very, very rare. How do we know, I mean, because I even wanted specifics about how do we know that's not going to happen? Well, apparently they have a, 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 a tank and then kind of a safety tank around it. Um, if I, all that we went through at that meeting was put in front of us with staff's recommendation and now T E C has voted okay, five to two, I, I feel like we're moving forward. I don't know that we need to go backwards and do this all over again. And that's what it sounds like we're wanting to do. I don't, I don't blame them for wanting to have more, you know, safety understanding. But I thought we asked all the questions we could ask in the world of safety and I was satisfied. Um, Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yeah, I, I'm looking at three point nine point four and I think it was pretty clear that, uh, specifically Wawa was doing exactly what it was contained, if there's a, at all. The second guess now is, hey, let's, let's see if maybe they should have done more. To me, it's kind of disingenuous. That's what I get. I, I don't know, we need to, I mean, you just said, and just admitted, well, maybe we need to get some expert to come in. But you only want to do that because there's a question of whether, maybe you need something else? You need a hundred and twenty percent instead of a hundred and ten percent. I guess my question would be, where did this paragraph, where, where does the requirements come from?
This hazardous materials manual was adopted, I believe, in the late nineties or early two thousands. And that's been in, on the books for quite a while. As far as where these specific regulations came from, I can't answer that. But I can't say that we believe, when we're reading, when we were reading this, and I, I think this from all departments, including water resources, to see if it was what they're doing, what Wawa was doing, is consistent with any criteria we have inside our area of critical concern. They found it consistent based on what they're reading here. Now, I guess the question is, if we want to evaluate whether the merits of this language here and these criteria, we thought we probably need to get someone outside to kind of help us look at this and say, okay, do we, do we want to look at this? Do we, because if we're doing something wrong, maybe we'd probably need a third party to do it. But we didn't feel that way when we reviewed the C U P and that's why we recommended what we did.
Okay, but are, are you looking for the merits of just three point nine point four? Are you going to be looking at the merits of the whole thing?
Well, T E C is specifically looking at three point nine, point four, point ten, point three, point five, just that paragraph. And that's on page three eighty-two of your packet.
Just nine. I'm, there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, do we need to make a motion here or something? Because I think we've talked this thing out.
Uh, uh, I think I'm hearing that council's okay with the, uh, the current language.
Yeah, and like I said, I went back to the last vote we had when the Wawa thing was there, we had the C U P, we had the discussion, we had the, uh, um, I don't say owner, but the representative of Wawa there. I asked every safety question I could come up with. Um, T E C approves at five to two. I think we move forward.
Okay. That we, we have.
Yes.
Gets all the direction.
Outside and quite honestly, it seems like, I think like Vice Mayor said, we're kind of backwards. We, we've already moved forward and sent them on their way and now it's like, well, I don't know, let's rethink this. All right, sir. City Manager?
Onto, uh, twelve B, uh, this is the planning and zoning commission's recommendation for direction to staff regarding, uh, planning and zoning commissions, conditional use permits and development agreements. During their regular meeting on eight December twenty twenty-one, P and Z approved motions to recommend consideration of amendments to the city's code as described below. Conditional use permits during a C U P on, uh, eight dash twenty twenty-one, on December eighth twenty twenty-one, the commission approved the motion six one and recommended advisability for city council as follows. If a conditional use permit with the same use is less than five years from the last known use, should not require a C U P, but should be evaluated by staff for compliance with the land development regulations and special requirements. If the site is found not to be in compliance with any of the requirements during the staff review, the conditional use process shall then be required. Other than this, staff should, staff approval within the conditional use permit fee, however, they, uh, might be a, may, may require a fee. Regarding development agreements, um, during their meeting, the motion was approved four to three to recommend allowing the existing developer agreements to react to market conditions, minor changes, to be approved by the developer, development agreement, may be approved administratively by providing none of the comprehensive plan policies are violated and the original approval of the total density is not increased. So what they're asking, um, with the conditional use permit is if it has expired, no conditions have changed, allow staff to administratively reapprove that. We, we don't really want to do that. And, and the second thing is with the development agreements as written, so, um, Brad, sir, to answer any further questions that you may have on this.
Go ahead. I asked a question, why not?
Couple of reasons we're concerned about that. One is, um, the, if asking staff to be the one to do the quasi judicial review of this is kind of putting us in a very difficult position. Um, the other two is, the second issue is the fact that it's, what I'm reading here based on our request for an advisability is that this would be a new process that we would have to develop, I don't know, if that's a new type of application, new type of fee structure, of, uh, timeframe to review it, additional, it's a different type of criteria that might need to be specific for the administrator to be able to use. It's different than what you would probably use. So it just seems like it's a redundancy. Um, and those are two main concerns.
Okay, that, they make, I knew the answer before I asked the question, but I thought it needs to be said for sure. We're obliged, we're supposed to be doing not our staff and, and I know staff don't want to put themselves in a, in a precarious position when it's our responsibility to make this C U P. A C U P is exactly what it is, the conditional use, and, uh, we should be the one term in that. So being the, the direction is to keep doing what you're doing. Now come up with some other process. I don't believe in coming up with new governmental requirements that's really not going to help anything. It's just going to put another thing in the way of progress, so that would be my recommendation, that we don't do anything.
In reality, I would like to perhaps pat them on the back because it looks to me like they were trying to streamline. If a conditional use permit with the same use is less than five years from the last known use, should not require C U P, but should be evaluated by staff and compliance with the land. That basically we're trying to say, nothing's changing and it's the same use. They're just saying, let's just get it through. I, I understand your concern and I'm going to lean on that side, but I do want to say as I read this, it does look like they were trying to, let's not have them have to go back to council, get them on the agenda, delay their progress. It looks to me, like I said, hats off, it looks like they're actually trying to streamline it. Would you agree with that?
I, I think their intent was, was good. The practicality of it is that, how do we verify that? We still have to go through a process and so if that's not, different from.
And that's, that's, that's fair and that's valid. I, I did like the way they're trying to say, look, if it's the same and it's within five years, let's not go through the whole thing again. That sounds like something we might say. But it doesn't seem to work, so I get it. Member Robinson?
Yes, it's, it's two things that I want to bring to mind and, you know, it, it's, you can't grandfather, uh, uh, C U Ps in and that's kind of grand, if you pass, if another buyer comes in, you're grandfathering this process in. Two, uh, the responsibility is still ours. You can pass the task, but you can't pass the responsibility. Those are my two concerns in with that. Grandfathering things because so many other variables can change in five years that it, it, you, you may have to look at it totally different.
And I agree with all that, make it very clear, I'm simply saying that I applaud anybody who's trying to cut out a step and have them to come back to council again. I certainly have had some developer people come to me and say, do we have to keep coming back, we, you know, can we just do this? I get it. And that's what it looked like they were trying to do, but I totally understand that it's just not, not workable. Uh, Member Nelson?
Well, I agree, I don't like having staff deal with conditional use permits. So I'm in agreement there, but I am curious about the development agreements. How does staff feel about that?
A, a development agreement is a negotiation between a developer and you.
Right, right.
And so staff, again, does not want to really interfere with that process. We will make recommendations to council on that, but yes, that, that's a negotiated agreement between you and the developer.
So we should leave that alone, too.
If I could just add, every development agreement is a little different depending on how it's tailored. Sometimes they'll have caveats in there to say, if you make a change, certain percentage, then you don't have to come back for, yes, it really depends on how you negotiate it.
Member Stokel?
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate, I do not like the idea of giving staff our job because next thing we'll see, they'll, they'll make a decision and then we're not happy with it, probably, so. Yeah, and then also with the conditional use permit, I'm all for making things as efficient as possible. Just with that, I think it's been discussed here, it's, I think those are intended for that specific purpose and that project and not to be kind of kicked down the road and grandfathering it in. So I'm kind of, I, I like how things are right now, but I do applaud P and Z for trying to make things a little bit more efficient.
And that's exactly where I am, I, I never thought we had a chance to make this fly, but I did like it when it said if it's the same and it was within five years, maybe we can cut this step out. But I agree, you can't do that, I get it. But my hat's off to them for trying to, you know, expedite something. Uh, it sounds very clearly to me like we've got all five off, if we just do it like that, we still call a card if we don't vote? All right, call the cards.
Stan Johnston?
Of course, Stan might say, I'll just sit down on this one.
Uh, uh, it's just a real quick one, on that last item that you're talking about is that, is that, um, I wouldn't, well, nobody's asking for y'all to go back and, and redo this, uh, approval or disapproval for Wawa. No, that's not it. They're asking for in the future, what's going to happen, but, but because this, this, um, technical manual, whatever, hazardous manual, uh, does not fit to, to approve the, uh, that way it was set up. And that's what, they had a split decision about it, so it's not, so anyhow, just wanted to correct you on that. Um, this, uh, amendment to the code, well, uh, I put, I, I oppose it and, uh, but, uh, the code, code needs to be, uh, amended in, in ways, I mean, we're just, we're just seeing that again and again and again uh, because the code doesn't fit and, and, and I just gave you an example of, about this, uh, S N J Oaks, Elizabeth Oaks, doesn't make sense. I mean, we're, we're running, we're running it through and, and it's, it's absolutely outrageously invalid on the survey and the sketch plat. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's it, is, uh, we all in agreement? Not, they can't go that direction?
We, we've got direction, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, you're onto petitions and requests of the public.
Petitions and requests from the public. For the real.
Yeah, right there. You can do it.
I'm still trying to figure out what I. We're going to find out why they're all here.
This is Margaret Van Deven, four five nine Valerie Drive in Titusville. Um, tonight I would like to talk to you about a, uh, overcrowding situation at the dog park, Marina Dog Park, it's, it's really bad. Um, we're experiencing growing pains, just like most of, you know, Titusville is, associated with all the, uh, new construction and all the, uh, the rising population with dogs, lots of dogs. Um, I also want to propose a quick fix to solve the problem. So I, um, have a few facts that I'd like to share with you. If you don't mind, I have a handout and it'll give you, uh, and according to the U S Census Bureau, Quick Facts and Wikipedia, in two thousand nineteen, Titusville had a population of forty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-two. In two hundred and twenty, Titusville had a population of forty-eight thousand seven eighty-nine. In talking points of Titusville in October twenty twenty-one, uh, some of this list that I'm going to say is part of the, um, new residential dwellings, which are almost a thousand new dwellings that are under construction and ready for occupancy. And that's, uh, River Palms, a hundred unit condominiums, S N J Towers, twenty-eight townhomes, Verona subdivision, two hundred and fifty single family homes, Ox Lake Hammock, sixty-one single family homes, Riverview Apartments, two hundred and ten units, Brook Landing, a hundred and forty-three single family homes, Chores of Tranquility, nine hundred, I'm sorry, ninety-nine single family homes and Brookshire, a hundred and sixty-six single family homes. As I said, almost a thousand new residential. We have beautiful parks, we have twenty-five beautiful parks here in Titusville. Uh, unfortunately, those parks put limitations on dog owners. Most of the parks, a majority of them say animals are not allowed, um, except for service animals. Families from all over the world come to Titusville. Some of them bring their dogs, their pets. Um, and we have a city marina and it's right next to the dog park. And I've spoken to many people who are there that say the reason that they are at the city marina is because of the dog park. Um, and, uh, we also have the rocket launches and believe it or not, when we have rocket launches, that park is full. Because that's the only place you can really enjoy the day, um, and have your dog with you and your family.
More minutes?
One minute, okay. Um, as I said, uh, finding a solution sooner rather than later is, is what this community needs. And, um, nonetheless, there's a low cost quick fix that will solve the problem, let me explain. Adjacent to the dog park is an abandoned B M X park. Um, I use the term abandoned because no one has seen a B M X bikes used for the intended purpose for over six years. Nothing's been there. Uh, the county has a use, has allowed the dog park people to use that space when the regular dog park is under repair. We've been there for three months at a time and they're thinking with the, with the repairs that are coming up, we're going to be over there again. Um, and the dogs love running around the hills and the extra space. They really have nowhere else to go. We as dog owners have nowhere else to take our dogs. We love the park and we love all the parks, but there's only one dog park. It's important to the community to have access to a park that's not dangerous where you have many dogs, many people standing in a small space where accidents happen.
Um, well, no, first of all, it's, that's very interesting to me. Uh, I can't tell you that, I can confirm that the B M X park isn't used. I can tell you that I haven't seen it used much. I go by there quite a bit, I go drive through the parks, I'm on the Parks and Recreation Board.
Yes, you mentioned that in August and I appreciate that.
And, uh, I was very impressed with the dog park participation. I'll be honest with you, I never knew we'd have so many people in the dog park in Titusville. And I was, and I took that to Jeff Davis, uh, who's the Parks and Recreation Supervisor of this area. And I've spoken about the dog parks several times at our meetings. Not knowing we'd be seeing each other here.
Yes.
Um, but I am impressed with the dog park, I'm impressed again. I had no idea because I go by there sometimes, it's like, there's like thirty dogs running around in there. And I'm a dog lover, I've got three dogs and, um, I love dogs. Um, I'm fortunate to have a backyard and can just let them go and they just run and play. And I can imagine what it's like if you don't have a backyard. And I would not want to be that person that has to constantly walk my dog on the leash, don't misunderstand me, that's fine too. Um, but I don't know all the ins and outs to this. I would say my first thought, being on the Parks and Recreation Board, it would seem as though, because they maintain our parks and pretty much tell us what's going on down there and, hey, we're not using this, we want to convert this. They generally are the ones that we lean on to decide what we're going to do with them. And I don't know, have you talked to Jeff Davis?
Um, uh, they're short-staffed, so when you try to reach someone, it's difficult to get a message across. I know they're trying to do some things with resodding and the spring, getting the sprinkler system working, which we really appreciate it. However, um, and they're going to, like I said, we'll be back over at the temporary dog park. And we love it. and we love it. And so I haven't approached them with this scenario, uh, yet, because I wanted it to city properly, properly.
Right, and I appreciate that. Um, I will say, and correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, but I would say your first step would be two six four fifty one oh five, I've got that number down pretty good, ask for Jeff Davis, if you don't get him, he'll call you back. And that's where it would start, and that's when Jeff would then call us and say, you know, what about this, what about that, let's go look at this. I don't really know, I have heard that there, on, at least on some weekends, there are, um, some BMX bikes out there. I haven't seen them. I will say there's another, uh, group of people that go out there on Sundays with these little robo-cars.
On the sign, it says, "Only BMX bikes allowed in this park, nothing else." No RC cars, uh, no animals, nothing else, it's very clear. Um, and I haven't seen a BMX bike there in four years. I have three other people that just want to speak briefly, and I can reiterate what, and confirm what I'm saying.
Sure, and before we go to, I don't think, I don't think anybody's not trusting you, but that's fine. Um, could we do an advisement to run this through Parks and Rec and Jeff Davis and get some feedback, you know, official feedback from him, and then I certainly go to the, um, the meetings, and I don't know, it seems to me where I could see you would be standing and during the, the public discussion, which is the end of our meeting, you know, all kinds of groups come up, and you would be one that would do that there. And by that time, I would like to, my personally, uh, talk to Jeff Davis a little bit and see what he's thinking. I can't say I have all the answers on this. Again, I knew we had a dog park, and I knew we have BMX thing, I didn't realize the BMX wasn't being used, and I didn't know you used that one-year park isn't in line moving.
We do, yes, we do.
So that says something, too. City manager, I interrupt you.
Yes, sir. Uh, just remind council that you've also funded some amenities that are going into the dog park through the CRA.
Right, we did.
Um, you, you are correct. I believe the correct venue would be to go to the Park and Rec Board, and they do have petitions at the end of their meeting, um, to see if, if your board that you, um, sit on actually...
Right, absolutely.
Would like to, uh, take a look at the utilization of the park amenities.
It's, it's coming up. I believe it's, uh, it's, uh, second, second Thursday, it was the first Thursday, the second Thursday of every month, I can look that up in just a minute and tell you. But that's really where, whatever we find out here, that's where this is gonna end up, and I would be at that meeting to, you know, say, hey, we came to us and...
Is that a meeting that you would recommend I be at, or not?
Say, oh, yes, absolutely. Pretty much what you just did here.
All righty.
Do there.
Yes.
And you have the little, the, we're kind of at little card tables, I mean, it's not, but it's, you know, we're there, and they're very receptive to trying to help, but it's really gonna come down to what the, the staff of Parks and Rec says, and, and like city manager said, we just recently passed, because, and I, it's another place I said it, was, uh, what, the shade structure?
Oh, yes, in August.
Yeah, we, we passed the funding for a shade structure.
Passed it sooner rather than later.
And that's another reason I was driving through there, thinking, yeah, because again, I hear about the dog park, we're, we're looking at doing a shade structure, and that's when I went through, said, my goodness gracious.
Well, the best thing about the park across the street, there are two shade structures already built. We love it over there, and the dogs love it, and it's safer.
I know that, I would still suggest that you call, maybe meet with Jeff at the office up there over by Dun Air Park on Williams Avenue, and just sit down and kind of play it off, this is what we're thinking, and this is where, I will come before the board. Um, I don't know exactly what he will think, but I, it doesn't sound like, especially since you're already using this, um, little part of the park.
Yes, for months at a time.
And which means the dogs can't get out, they must be fine.
They, what they did is they actually closed the, uh, the BMX park for the dogs. They built, they connected fences so they can't get out, and they accommodated the needs of the dog park.
Okay. Go ahead and have your other speakers, and then we will, we'll go from there. But I would say, uh, and again, if you want to write it down or not, but two six four fifty one oh five, and ask for Jeff Davis, and see you at the meeting. Hey, how are you?
I'm Walt Bukowski, um, I'm one of those dog people.
Love dog people.
Landscape architect, practiced as an environmental planner for about forty years, so have some knowledge of Parks and Recreation issues. Um, one of the, one of the points that, uh, Margaret failed to mention is that if we were to be given, uh, the use of that space across the street, um, in my opinion, it would take very little to get it up to snuff to use as a dog park. Couple of waste stations, running a water line from the water fountain, which is just outside the fence line right now, maybe a couple of park benches, there's already a shade structure in there, there are bleachers, um, the fence is secure, um, I don't think it would cost the city very much to make that conversion. Um, the other...
Hold on a second.
Yeah, we, we won't fund any of that.
No, there's, and that's where, and I'm just kind of rolling on here listening, because I'm used to hearing that. Um, it would be, uh, Parks and Recreation, and that's where she will speak, or you will speak, I don't care.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm, I'm just saying, though, that...
Right, whatever the funding is, wherever it comes.
In my opinion, it's not big bucks, but be that as it may. The other, the other issue, um, that I wanted to hit on is, is if we had the two areas, it would allow one area to recover quicker or easier than it does right now. Right now, it can't recover. It's a, it's a sandpit. Um, it's so overused, the dogs, especially, you know, it's split into two pieces, small dog, big dog. The big dog side is just torn apart because it, there's, there's too many dogs in there. It can't recover. So the, it was resodded a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, it's dirt again, because it just, it, it just gets pounded into dust, um, by the, by the heavy usage. And all the statistics that Margaret presented on the population growth just speaks to the fact that we could expect more as time goes on. So, um, and that space across the street is probably four times the size of what we currently have. Um, it would really be, um, a benefit to the, to the city in terms of image, you know, Margaret hit on the fact that people who come to Titusville for rocket launches, for the marina, whatever, they bring their, their pets there. I've seen people drive by and look at the place and just keep going with their dogs in the car, because it's either too crowded, or it's just not appealing anymore. Um, so I, I think to upgrade, to expand, would certainly, um, speak well for the city of Titusville in terms of visitation. Okay.
No, no, thank you very much. I was just thinking about those dogs going by and saying it's not a good enough park for us, let's go to the next one.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Nudie dogs.
My name is Linda Gardner, I'm Hickory Hills subdivision. I've recently adopted a Shar Pei, and she's a very healthy and fit fifty-pound dog. Um, not having a fence for my yard.
Right.
I have to let this dog run to remain healthy and fit. And, um, I was one of those who didn't know where that dog park was, and when I drove by it, I'm going, where, where is it, where is it? You look at it really in disdain, and it's not safe. I've recently had the unfortunate, um, case where I've been slammed by three dogs at once at the gate, and a lot of us have been. There are, it's too small for the twenty, thirty dogs given at any day, especially in our winter seasons, and, um, improvements would consist of the park across the street, all these dogs love it, they coexist wonderfully together. There would be no real finances involved to making it feasible for our dogs. And if you'll note, a few of the Titusville and county websites, the Talking Points of Titusville, thecountyoffice.org, and some comments on Facebook, you will see that our own websites say that we have these dog parks, plural, and we don't, and that we have, um, beaches for our dogs to go off-leash, we don't. And, um, there are some misunderstandings that really don't reflect the real dog park. We don't have dog fountains, we don't have splash pads for the dogs, but that's a misconception on the website's part. We would like to simply have more room. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I learned not to get a lot out of Facebook a long time ago. Uh, no, but that being said, uh, the one thing I was gonna ask when, and maybe you can answer, and any of y'all can answer, because like I said, I've gone by there several times, have been amazed at how many dogs were there, because I never thought we would have had such an active dog park in our city. Is there a sign or anything that says a dog occupancy? You know, that could, you know, that might make, not make some people happy if they get there late, but that might have something to do, because it doesn't matter what dog park you're in, if it's overcrowded, people gonna trip. And if you go to the other one, and it gets full, too, that's not the dog park's fault, that's how many dogs we got there. So I didn't, I didn't know that. I'm gonna get with Jeff Davis, and I actually was, I'm sitting here thinking, I think I want to meet him down at the dog park, I don't want to do it yet, because if it's cold, it might not be very crowded, and I'd like it to be crowded, so he can see how busy it is. Yeah, so I won't go tomorrow, but maybe next week when it gets better, I'd like to go down there, because I swear, when I went by there, it was like middle of the day, it was like twenty-five or so dogs in there. Yeah, and I was really surprised that there are no dogfights going on, I was like, holy cow, they all get along. Well, I bet. Go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, so, there's three primary perspectives.
Wait, 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 start off with your name and address, please.
Oh, yeah, that's right. My name is Mike, I live around Cherry Wood Lane, I live in the same household as Linda, um, I'm the uncle of the Shar Pei.
Okay.
She calls me Unki, because it's cute. But aside from that, there's three primary perspectives I'd like to make a rhetorical and oversimplified perspective on. So, the first one is the number of dogs and households that have dogs in the United States. So, the last poll I looked at, it was a hundred and twenty-seven million households in the United States. Sixty-three million of those have at least one dog. Seventy percent of those have at least two or more. That's a lot of dogs, in other words. Um, the other thing I want to go over to, um, in addition to there being so many dogs and so many households that have them, that has a huge boon on the, the pet industry, you know, like, um, like pet care, pet food, uh, vet bills. That's actually, um, an almost seventy-billion-dollar company. So clearly, that number's growing, especially since literally ten years ago, there were forty-three million households with dogs. That's up twenty million. So, in other words, that's continuing to grow. So that's like a, I know that's not within the confines of Titusville, but that's just a big, broad perspective.
Good point.
So, the next thing I'd like to go over to is potential economic benefits that may have. So I found this, I found this, um, survey that went over, um, the city in California, uh, potential for, what we got here? Health cost savings, approximately a hundred and six thousand adult residents in Los Angeles Parks, Trails, and Recreation Centers who engage in physical activity at a level sufficient to generate measurable health benefits, yielding annual Medicare cost savings a hundred and fifty-one million dollars. That comes from the morale boost and the addition of exercise as prompted by having parks in the United States, in particular, dog parks, because, you know, we're prompted to take our dogs for walks and whatnot. Um, what's another one? Also, another important one is local tourism. So, the trust for public land estimates that these visitors of the city of Los Angeles spend four hundred and twenty million dollars annually in the local economy, and you figure an average of twelve percent of these parks throughout the United States, there's sixty-six hundred of them, almost eight hundred of those alone are dog parks, so that's about twelve percent right there. So you figure for adjusting the city of Titusville alone, maybe roughly about eleven to twelve percent of that just coming from tourism, that's millions of dollars. So that's an economic benefit for the city of Titusville in itself. Um, I did have another benefit, too, which is, um, the morale boost that comes from us, um, socializing together, the fact that dog parks bring owners together, even when we're strangers, and that's why we form communities. I mean, I'm sure you've seen these Facebook communities of like the dog parks, and dog owners and whatnot.
Yeah, I tried to stay away from them, but anyway, we're good to go, I got you.
Yeah, so you get the idea.
No, no, I do, I did, I got you when she spoke. Um, I mean, no, and I'm glad to hear all y'all, but I mean, clearly...
I did have a quick closing statement, though.
I think I, I've made it, uh, real clear, I, I, I like the idea, I learned a lot. I didn't know you guys had used the BMX place, that was my biggest surprise. So it works. And, um, I really think you need to call the, uh, I'm good, go ahead, I'll go back there, thank you.
Okay.
I, I'm going to call, um, Mr. Davis and speak to him, but I also want you to call him, because I need you to be at the next meeting. And that, nothing, no pressure, it's not even, really, it's not a big deal, but it really needs to be said there. Uh, I, I'll get it to you in a minute. So I'm like...
Mayor, if I, if I could also suggest, I think one of the comments was there, the signage in the parks, which we don't have anything to do with, does say, "No dogs allowed in the park." That may be something that you could address with Park and Rec.
Oh, I'm gonna go with, seriously, the best thing I can do...
Because I, I agree with you, I, I know that's not being enforced, but if you are a rule follower and you see a sign that says, "Don't walk your dog in the park," some people actually do that, but...
Don't walk, okay.
But that may be something that you could suggest, uh, Mr. Davis.
Well, I think if we, because I am not as familiar with, I did go by and I saw the dog park, I went out in it, I didn't know at that time, till we saw the city council meeting sign posted that we were gonna talk about this, um, that I realized the BMX place had anything to do with the dogs. And now that I hear that, it's like, that's, that's interesting.
I think, I think it was just utilized as a temporary measure while repairs were being done.
February tenth, February tenth at five o'clock. And, um, I don't know how to describe where it's at, the Brevard Room over by the courthouse, I don't know what that, anyway. So it's, it's right off of South Street, the big six-story building, office building, it's right behind there is where we meet, but do let, uh, Mr. Davis know what you're thinking about, and I've got a lot of things to talk to him about, but I'm going to meet him at the dog park. Thank you, I appreciate you guys. Love my dogs. All right, um, anything else, you guys good? Um, petitions or requests, anybody else, come on up. Use this material for other information. Housing information.
Hello, council.
Hi, how are you?
My name's Danny Atal, uh, eleven sixty-five Moore Sav, Titusville. Um, I'm here on the other half, uh, of the BMX track, um, that, uh, there's another side, yeah, we are here to fight for what's already there.
Yeah, well, I, I'm glad to hear that side, because, yeah, go.
Yeah, so, uh, obviously, you heard in the history, uh, the, the buzz about the RC cars and people playing.
Right, I have heard more about that, yeah.
And, uh, the BMX track for the past, uh, four years has been the go-to for families, a safe place to utilize this abandoned so-called BMX track, which it's not. Um, we use it quite often. Uh, you might not find us there at the same time as these early birds at the park, early day, these are people that are working, they get off of work, they want to do something recreational with their kid that just got out of school, let's get our toys and head over to the park. It's being utilized. I just, I understand, uh, this is not the venue for this fight here, but, um, Parks and Rec, we will be at that meeting, we have spoke with Jeff Davis multiple times, we've been tossed around in the loop between the city and the Parks and Rec, and we've been in contact the same way you've been, uh...
Yeah.
...enlightened about it.
Yeah.
So there is a huge community, uh, hundreds of us that come from all over, Melbourne, Orlando, Kissimmee.
How many, how many bikes do you think go in there a day?
Oh, let me rephrase this, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but, uh, not used as bikes. Um, for the remote-controlled cars, we are not, we are not bikers, we don't own any BMX bikes. We've utilized this track as the BMX people have stepped away.
Okay, okay, I'm glad I clarified that.
Yes, very, very much so.
So it's used for the cars?
Yes.
I noted that a moment ago, so I wasn't totally off.
Yeah, so we just want to plant the seed, we will fight our case later and say, hey, we don't, we're not looking for any extra funds from the city, we're not looking, what's there is perfect for us, the mounds, what it was intended to do, for a vehicle to move up and down and jump around, um, families, kids, grandparents.
Do you mostly go out on like weekends or Sundays?
Weekends, usually Sundays, um, there's a group, uh, there's a group that's put together that usually get together on a Sunday, everybody's off on a Sunday, these are all working people, they pay for this constant hobby, so they want a place to use it in an open area, um, and the BMX track has been...
Hold on one second, go ahead and stop the clock. Thank you, go ahead.
Uh, the BMX track has been that place for Titusville. Growing up in Titusville, we've never had complexity of recreational things to do. We'd always have to go to Orlando, go to Melbourne, go to Daytona. Well, no, we want to do it here in Titusville. We love being in Titusville, we want to do things in our hometown. And we bring people here to join us to do it, so...
Now, I had heard about the, what do you call them, the cars?
Yes.
I hadn't heard anything about bikes, and now you're saying that we're not talking bikes?
No, and it can be purpose, if somebody has a bicycle, by all means, do it. And we're not saying, "Hey, don't let your dog go play there," but what happens is, there is conflict. I have members with me here that are here to say, "Hey, we are using that park." The complexity of that park, dog park, arena, boat, skate park, open air, there's, there's complexity. Why, why take away that complex park design that was originally designed to make it into something bigger? We have extra people that utilize that constantly, so...
Well, I appreciate your input.
Yes.
And I will tell you that I can't wait for the Parks and Rec people to figure this out.
Yes. Yeah, so we can fill the building up with 500 people, or to, because this is what they love.
Well, it doesn't matter how many, so I, I need to find out more about the, what I thought was the BMX track, but I also knew that they're using the cars over there, because I met a guy fourth of July, said, "Come out Sunday, bring your kid, watch this." I have gone out there and watched them, and it's fun to watch, and that's where I watched them.
Yes, zero, zero funding needed, leave it there.
Oh, it's very simple, I agree.
Hey, we'll share it with dogs, if there's a dog that wants to go play, we all, all we ask is, remove the feces. The larger area now, you have this huge area, their dog defecates on the other side of the lot, I'm not walking all the way over there, "Get a, Piper, come over here."
This sounds like a perfect thing for Parks and Rec to deal with, so thank you very much. I appreciate it, I'm glad you said that. And truthfully, you guys can talk, because I can't make you not, but I think we got where we're going, and this won't be decided here, it'll be decided at the Parks and Rec meeting, in which I will be at. So that'll be a late night. All right, anybody else for petitions or requests, you know, and you can speak if you want, because you have that right, but we pretty much know where we're going, it's not here, it's going to be at Parks and Rec. I don't know if he's standing up or he's not. So, uh, no? I'm going to call Jeff tomorrow and, and propose that we meet out of the dog park, and then I'm going to walk over to the other place, but I really want you to get ready, because like I said, whatever date, I told you, February 10th, I think, that's when you need to be out there. Here we go. All right, thank you, guys. Took me a whole meeting to figure out why you guys were over there. I said, "These aren't regulars, who are these guys?" Good to see you guys, thank you so much, I learned a lot. City Manager.
Yes, sir, we're on to Mayor's and City Council, City Managers' reports.
Council members, let's start down on the left and go right. Remember Stokoe.
Okay. Um, first off, good luck...
Hold on one second, hold on one second.
Okay.
That'll be a long meeting. That was some interesting information. I think that guy in the black hat took me out, met him on the 4th of July. Thank you. And they got these cars, they can climb. Is really... Jeff Davis? All right. All right, thank you very much, remember Stokoe.
I'm still kind of curious about how they all knew that there was a, to come talk tonight about that topic, when I didn't, yeah, that was interesting. Good luck at Parks and Rec regarding that. I wish there was a way that we can have both, potentially, like, just expanding the dog park without going into that area, I don't know, good luck.
We'll let them decide that.
Yes. Did want to say, didn't say earlier, just, you guys know how much I love our communications department, so it was really nice to see them get recognized. I feel like I'm around a lot of cities, just with the Space Coast League of Cities, and what they do with four of them, in terms of the talking points, in terms of running the video, in terms of figuring out how to hold our meetings over there, live streaming on YouTube, now social media, and I've watched our social media numbers and they are growing. I just think they do a phenomenal job, so I just wanted to acknowledge them. In terms of my report, I just wanted to kind of keep you guys posted, session started January 11th, and it will go till March 11th. There are a lot of local bills that are worrying me, so I'm watching them, and as I'm watching them in the House, then I have to go watch them in the Senate, and it's this like, back and forth. I will say, the smoking bill that I've been trying to get for several years now, did just pass its first committee stop in the House side, so that happened, and then now we're trying to get it going in the Senate, which we've had that support for a while. Other ones to watch out for, just so you guys are, know what's going on, there's some local issue, local bill issues, that could potentially prevent us from getting grants from DEP regarding business damages in the city, cities being required to have a business impact study, we still have that local partisan bill issue, which could come at any time, it doesn't follow the same process, so it's kind of difficult to watch that one.
If I could add on that, that's a huge piece of legislation, so any ordinance that you, comes before Council, has to have an economic impact study associated with it. That's, that's huge.
There, there's a lot, I feel like, as I'm getting into this, that would really impact us here on Council, and really impact our budget, quite honestly. I was just looking at one the other day regarding homestead tax exemption, just increasing that, which then would obviously impact our budget and what we will do here. And as we know, City Manager, I think we talked about just the rising costs, going through like, items tripling just a year ago, which makes me very nervous. And then I am glad they are addressing some cybersecurity issues as well. Then again, who is funding that? So, just watching some of those things, I will keep you guys posted of any, as things happen, yeah, so this will be going on till March 11th, and then if you guys are interested, if you go to the Florida League of Cities website, they do nice bill summaries, there's just a lot, so you can kind of pick and choose what you're, what you're interested in. Just a little nervous right now. Yeah.
Home rule. Yeah, I, I'm going to keep it short, but I, Sarah is dead on, I, I got an email, I guess from the League of Cities, and what things they were for and what they were against, and a lot of them just scared the life out of me, because it is about home rule, and even this redistricting we got in, I'm going to get a, I mean, it's just, a lot of stuff that's going on, it just seems like everything is going to happen in Tallahassee, all the powers coming in Tallahassee, and I grew up, you know, locally is where everything should be, and now it's almost like it's a power grab, and everything has to be in Tallahassee, and in my mind, it is just, it's dangerous, the direction we're going. And I'm not sure, and the League of Cities is pretty strong, but when you got a group of people who want something to happen, it's going to happen, they know how to count. The thing that always, I thought was real funny is, you know, we have Florida sunshine where we can't talk to each other, but they sure can, you know, they, I, I just think it's kind of hypocritical, to tell you the truth, but... Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of interesting, for sure, so, we need to stay on top of, if I had people to ask me, "What do you think about the redistricting and everything?", and I basically told them, "It's not much I can do about it, you know, they, they got their idea of what they want to do, and they're going to do it, for sure, and that's just, to me, it's just undemocratic, my opinion." That's me, that's it. Yeah.
Member Nelson.
What are you trying to say?
Reinstituting the farmer's market this spring, and I'm hoping that we can still do that there.
Yes, ma'am, I, I got an update on that today. The Chamber, the County Commissioner has asked that, that they possibly may want to participate to expand our farmer's market, so we're trying to work those details out, if, if in fact, we can come together on that. But we will have something before Council on a contract renewal with, with the Chamber of Commerce here, hopefully, if, if not your next meeting, but the following.
That would be great, because that really seemed to help people...
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
...in the area. And I wanted to thank her for doing a proclamation for Rotary.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, that's very cool.
Our district governor decided to walk 180 miles from Titusville to Boca Raton as a march for peace.
Like, seven miles, hey?
Yeah, yeah, and believe me, the man walked fast. So, the mayor read the proclamation, and that man took off, and, yeah, I, I was, I kept up the first half a mile, and then I went right down him.
Yeah, you did, I think you did, with him for a while.
Yeah. So they are raising money for a, basically, a conflict resolution in the schools. So if, if the schools want to participate in a conflict resolution, Rotary's there. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Great initiative. Member Robinson.
You guys, oh, I, oh, I did this, just, I, I, it was an article in the Florida Today about Titusville and affordable housing, for the last few days.
Yeah.
That was a good thing, I was, I attended a workshop, because I am the elected official on Ahab. So there was a workshop yesterday, talking about the importance of, of the legislation that's coming down, that is really going to mandate, and puts a lot of money aside to do affordable housing, and I told them that we are kind of running out of space as far as housing is concerned, because we can't go too far. So we're staying on top of that, to keep in compliance with new state law. The other part, I went to a training for TPO, you know, and I told them, I said, "I thank you for the training, and after being on the, on the board for a year, I finally know why I'm sitting here." They laugh, it's, it's a good thing, you know, I finally know why I'm sitting here. So that, that's got to be, since, since last week, and that's what I've been doing, and trying to stay on top of other things. That's my report.
Very good, sir, thank you. Always entertaining. I am going to miss, remember Stokoe for a moment, and I'm going to pass the gavel, I'm going to need a vote of approval. I've been invited to the Apollo, it's called the Apollo 13 Splashdown, and obviously, you know the story of Apollo 13, it was an unbelievable fact that they were able to splash down. And I was invited, clearly in my mind, because it was a surprise to be invited, because I'm the mayor of Titusville, and Titusville obviously is a deep heart and roots of the space program. It will be on Saturday night, at the Radisson in Cocoa Beach, Port Canaveral, whatever they call that. And in the morning, and I think, I think for sure you'll be there, some others will be there, I have a welcome, I do the welcome for the Astronaut Memorial. So that's 11 o'clock in the morning, and then I think it's 5 or 6 o'clock in the evening, I would go to that. What I'm asking for, as Member Stokoe has done on occasion, properly so, so I'm trying to copy her, is it, it's, together, my wife and I go, will be $250, and I, I've already accepted to go, because if we decide not to pay for it, I'm going anyway, because it's a really big deal to me, being here since 1965, and coming here with my dad with the space program, and he worked mightily long hours on Apollo 13, and I remember when we, he wasn't working, when he was working, the turkeys were open, and we went and prayed every night. That was a big deal. So I am asking the Council to approve, because it was actually already supposed to be paid, and I said, "Well, we don't meet till Tuesday, I need to get Council to approve it." So I'm asking for $250 to represent Titusville as the mayor at the Apollo 13 Splashdown events this Saturday night.
Okay, need a motion?
Need a second.
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
To, to provide him the money for the Apollo ceremony.
All right, I was moving a second, I guess we can do by voice, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like signs, ayes have it.
You're sleeping.
How can you have a card for something that's not on the agenda?
Do you have a card, really?
You can't have a card on something that's not on the agenda.
How's he got a card when it's not on the agenda?
Uh, sir, it does have a card here that indicates 14, 15, 16.
You're running the show now.
Oh, come on up, Sam. Wow. What is 12, Ian?
Oh, oh, he threw it away. I don't even get to call on you, I'm out of this.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for recognizing me and recognizing my card, speaking card. So I think it's a great idea. I think they should give you $500.
Couldn't you make a motion?
$500. All right, I think we already made the motion, and we, we second it, so all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like signs, ayes have it. There you go.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it, I, I plan on taking it very, very seriously, I will tell you that. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have about five items I'd like to go over.
Oh, no.
No, just, just reminding, on calendar, coming up on 19 February, will be your beginning of your community conversation for your strategic budget, and then the follow-on workshop on 15 March.
I know it's in my calendar, can you say that date again?
19 February, it's a Saturday, Saturday morning at 9:00.
Okay.
That's it, sir.
Uh, City Attorney? Oh my goodness gracious. Council, you guys are good?
I have just, yes, one, just to let the City Manager know, and the Mayor know, I will be out of town, I have to fly to Texas to funeralize my brother this weekend.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
And I just wanted to let everybody know that the City Mayor already knew it, I mean, City Manager already knew it, so, but I just wanted everybody to know...
Thank you, thank you, and condolences to you and the family, that's never fun. You doing the service?
I'm doing the service.
Wow, wow.
I can do that.
Be praying for you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? We're good?
We're good.
This has been the Titusville City Council meeting. Coming up next, the Florida Channel, already in progress.
Good morning, members. Thank you. Good to be back, by the way, better than being down at the Civic Center. So, as a, my name is Christian Cameron, I'm here on behalf of the Florida Charter School Alliance, and Alliance represents over 1,000 students, roughly 58% of the charter school population. We just wanted to thank Senator Burgess for sponsoring this good bill, and Senator Diaz for...